I'd like to bring this month's meeting of the Metro Historic Zoning Commission to order. First, Robin, do we have any agenda items?
Yes. 14, excuse me, 814 Russell Street is removed from consent. It was approved administratively. And building and signage illumination has been deferred, and those are the only changes.
Everybody has seen the changes to the agenda. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed, okay. Agenda approved. I see there's a couple of council persons, I think, in the audience. Would you like to speak now, or would you just want to wait till the case is up? Okay. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Berkeley Allen, Councilmember for District 18. Thank you so much for your service. I know how hard you work. I'm here to speak on, I'm not sure, the item number. The address is 1306 Beechwood, towards the end. If someone will tell me the item number, I will say it. I know that's helpful.
It is Q.
Item Q. This is a property that I've had an ongoing relationship with, and I'm happy to see that I think we're close to a resolution with it. So I'd like to speak in support of requiring them to make the change at codes. I understand that they have to come and be approved here, from a historic standpoint, before they can make the correction to make their detached accessory dwelling unit fit the 700-square-foot dimension, and they intend to do that, but they have to get your permission first. So I just wanted to be sure we weren't getting the cart before the horse, and I've been assured that there is a logical sequence and that it will proceed from here. So I appreciate your consideration. I appreciate the owner's work to get this correct, and he's had to navigate a bunch of different sets of rules with a bunch of different acronyms and alphabet soup, and I know it's been complicated, but I think he's on the right path, and I believe that we'll have a good project when that's done. So thank you for your approval and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Berkeley. Okay, seeing no others, I'd like, motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed, okay. Motion carries. So each, for, we have a public hearing. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal. So it's eight minutes, and then you have two minutes at the end, and we have a clock here so that you can keep up with that. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they are representing an organization or a group, and then they may have five minutes. Appeals of the decision from Historic Zoning Commission pursuant to the provision of Section 2.680.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws. Notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chance Street Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County via statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. So first is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on in a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
First, we have 1316 Fourth Avenue North. This is new construction of an addition. 104 Fifth Avenue South, signage. 2406 Barton Avenue, new construction of an addition. 3508 Byron Avenue, new construction of an addition. And 814 Russell Street was removed from the agenda. Staff has reviewed all these applications, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny. First, open public, anyone have any items on consent agenda they'd like to see removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, any on the commission?
[inaudible]
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
All opposed.
Motion carries. The next thing is overlay recommendations, the Whitland NCZO expansion.
You may be familiar, well, you are familiar with the existing Whitland neighborhood, which is, just includes Whitland, and so this is an expansion of that existing neighborhood conservation overlay. This is a little bit different, though, than normal because we are recommending two changes to the design guidelines as well. One is just the name, from Whitland to Whitland area, because that is the name in the National Register nomination, which includes Whitland, the street, and a much larger area. And then the other is to change the period of significance from 1910 to 1945, to 1908 to 1957. Again, that new, that new period will match the National Register nomination, whereas the old period's significance was just relating to those buildings that are on Whitland. But obviously, if you approve and council approves, this will be a bigger neighborhood. It does qualify because it is already listed in the National Register, so it's a fairly easy one in terms of qualification. Whitland, Leonard, and, John, a blank, John, a blank, Leonard, are in the National Register and other streets as well, so. Staff recommends approval with those, recommends a recommendation to council for approval and with those changes to the design guidelines.
Okay. Any questions for Robin?
[inaudible]
Okay, okay. You want to speak now? Kathleen, come up now.
Thank you. This is actually my first time to present to y'all, so I wasn't 100% sure of our, of everything. I'm usually before the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning weekly. So this, this overlay came to me, obviously it was already in place, and then some neighbors started talking, talking to me about a year ago about expanding this, looking at the zoning in the area. This area is zoned R8, and I know that, I mean, having grown up in this area and lived here for a long time and then running for office, I heard the stories of the overlay in the past. And as you can see, we'll discuss more of my district next, but, so I was a little hesitant to, to start down this path because of the history of it, and really wanted to get neighbors on board ahead of time before even filing an application. So probably a year ago in May, I had a district-wide meeting about zoning and overlays and all of that kind of stuff, just like a zoning 101, like know what your zoning is. From there, discussions started to come in other parts of my district to change the zoning, and then on this, these streets, the conversation continued to change the zoning and change to expand the overlay. So what we have before us is the two streets where, when I put a survey out starting last October, where I have received the most responses and the most support to move forward with expanding the overlay. There is interest on other streets in this area, but at the time of filing, I did not feel like I had received enough responses and enough support to move forward. I am a visual person, and so I have colored the two streets. Red is there against it, green is that they are for it. And so, I mean, you can kind of calculate it out in your head and, and see that, first of all, to get this many responses has been fabulous, but of course, that did take a number of months. And then, secondly, there is significant support. Some of these lots are, are empty lots, are owned by double people. So I ask for your support and approval of this, and I'm excited to be moving forward with it. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions for her right now? We'll save time at the end for rebuttal, too.
Great, thanks.
So open public hearing. If we, we'll start off with the ones who are against this overlay, and if you just line up or just come straight, come to the mic, okay? Seeing none, are there any that are for, that would like to come and speak, for? Yeah, please.
I'm for it, but if there's no opposition.
Well, you can, that'd be great to hear. Just state your name and address.
Robert Claxton, 223 Leonard Avenue. These are my prepared, my prepared statement, assuming that there would be some obvious opposition, but I'll just read them and, as I prepare them. My wife and I moved to this location some 25 years ago. When we saw the neighborhood in our 1932 Tudor Revival House in particular, we knew that this was the place we wanted to spend the rest of our lives. This was truly a stable historical neighborhood, and we assumed that it would always be that way. Like most of us who moved into this neighborhood, we had assumed that everyone who lived here or would move here in the future would want to preserve the historical character integrity of the area. That assumption was a mistake. There is an adage that goes, if conditions allow it, anything that can happen, no matter how bizarre, eventually will happen. That seems to be the case here. We, along with most of our neighbors, had assumed that this beautiful historic neighborhood would always be preserved and would never change. However, we now know that if conditions allow, almost anything, no matter how unthinkable, eventually will happen. The tall, skinny duplex on Leonard Avenue is a painful illustration of this unthinkable possibility. We now have to change the conditions which allow this to happen. That is specifically, in addition to an RS zoning, to apply the Whitland historical overlay to our streets. This overlay is an excellent compromise between historical protection and homeowner flexibility. But no matter any possible personal reservations on their overlay, seems to me that the bottom line is the following. If we do nothing or oppose an overlay, there will be more tall, skinny duplexes and possibly worse. In my opinion, the vote is fairly straightforward. Tall, skinny duplexes in this historic neighborhood, yes or no? My wife and I vote no to the tall skinnies and yes to the overlay, and will do so for an RS zoning as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, please, come forward and state your name and address.
My name's Tom Forrest, and I'm at 227 Leonard Avenue. I've lived in the neighborhood 20 years, over 20 years. I'm also in favor of the overlay. I think Kathleen's done a great job in working through the neighborhoods and the homes. I live on the 200 block of Leonard Avenue, where there are 29 single-family homes. There's one duplex, one triplex, and one residential condo. The issue at hand has been the residential condo. That lot is a third of an acre. It's been divided up into two units. It will be the only single-family structure divided with two entrances on the house, really hurting the character of the street. Most of the houses were built in the 1920s and 1930s in a Tudor cottage version. So with that being said, I do think the overlay is warranted at this time and look forward to a positive vote on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Councilman, you want to make any other statement?
I'm just, I think, especially given the history of overlays in, in my district, something that I really tried, when I was running for office and tried to help to, after being elected, was zoning really can come down to street by street, block by block, and I think you can see that here. And I'm just really excited that, that we didn't have opposition. This has gone smoothly, and I really appreciate a lot of that is because of the neighbors' hard work as well. So, thank you, and I appreciate your vote.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, closed public hearing. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I live on Whitland and in the existing overlay and adjacent to the proposed. I've been approached by neighbors and have had discussions, so I'm recusing myself from the discussion and the vote.
Okay, duly noted. Any other discussion or motion?
I think this is pretty straightforward, as we're just saying that it does apply, I mean, it, it conforms to what we need to do, and we can approve it for our council, so I move to approve as recommended.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Bowling House District.
This is a brand-new district. It, you can see, it's fairly small. It's just two blocks within the larger Sylvan Park neighborhood, but it may be the most important little core of this neighborhood because it's some of the earliest homes for Sylvan Park, and it includes the home that gave the overall neighborhood its name, Sylvan Park. And it also is right up against the trolley line, which is how that neighborhood really developed, was access for that trolley line. So for those reasons, staff finds that it meets the requirements of the ordinance to be a neighborhood conservation zoning overlay, suggests recommendation to council and adoption of the design guidelines, which have been online for several weeks.
Okay, thanks, Robin. Any questions for Robin? Okay. Kathleen?
Thank you. So again, as you can see, this is just two blocks. It is a small area. I'm trying to keep true to the promise I made to my constituents that if they want to talk zoning, we could do it block by block and street by street and see what is appropriate for their neighborhood and what property owners are comfortable with. When I first approached for an overlay in Sylvan Park, I had a short panic attack over, over what the history of overlays in Sylvan Park have been and can be and take on a life of their own. And so this one, I kind of put a little bit more emphasis and responsibility on the neighbors to talk to each other. And there was a great block captain who you'll hear from, and we've got a couple other neighbors here today. They came to me with a color-in map. I didn't even have to put one together. Amazing. I didn't even put a binder together on correspondence because I have not received, to my knowledge, because we have been slammed with emails, to my knowledge, I haven't received any negative emails on this one. I received a question, I think this weekend, I had linked to the wrong, to the wrong link for the guidelines, and I told them how to Google to find that, because I don't think I got the, the right link out. But again, overwhelmingly, this has been supported, and I'm really excited, although it's just two blocks, it's what the neighbors want, and I'm happy to move forward with it. So I appreciate your support on this one, too.
Okay, great. Open public hearing. If anyone would like to speak against it, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Heather Truckee, and I live at 4505 Colorado Avenue, right behind, right in there. And I've lived there 17 and a half years, and I'm not, I would love to protect the bowling house and some of these other properties, but my house has not been updated like some of the ones that are in this area have been, and they've knocked down what's there and built huge houses covering almost all the yard. And my concern is that I'm going to be having to go through hoops and, you know, just to update my house and, and the cost and different things and the rules. Mine's just a little two-bedroom, one-bath house, but it still needs a lot of work. And I just would, I would wonder if we could not just make it the bowling house a national historic register district or hysterical property? I don't know if I'm saying that right. But anyway, or if you could just take me out of this portion and make it a little smaller, since it is such a small area. That's pretty much all I have to say. I'm just worried about not being able to do what I want to with where I've lived forever. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none. Anyone would like to speak for, please come forward and also state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Ben Gortmaker, resident of 4507 Nebraska Avenue, have reside and owned there for nine years now. First of all, and I have kind of been the block captain here, have held a meeting at my home, and Heather, I'm sorry that we didn't have a chance to have you there, that my intention was to have all of the neighbors together, and that is actually the first opposition I've heard, and want to make sure we're able to address that as well. This, as Kathleen noted, is something that started as conversations that I've had with our neighbors concerned about wanting to be able to protect our neighborhood with these historic homes, some of the oldest in our neighborhood, while also giving some flexibility. The NCZO zoning seems to do that, and I hope that if this does go through, that, that is something that allows Heather to be able to make those changes. But in short, there's obviously some other support here as well, but, I mean, this is something that seems like a really good step considering, I mean, just as we've heard from Whitland, the open nature of what's possible with, my neighbor just sold their house with one of the older homes, and to the comfort of knowing that there are some guidelines around tearing that house down and being able to build something that is fitting to the character of a crucial part of our neighborhood is important to me. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tiffany Townsend, and my husband, Chris Townsend, is here with me. I live at 4502 Colorado Avenue, across from Heather, and I've been there 16 years. And my concern is just, again, to protect the neighborhood and the charm that's there that has brought so many people to Sylvan Park that are moving there. I'm afraid if everything keeps changing the way it is throughout there, it's not going to be Sylvan Park as we know it today. It's going to be all-new construction. And so, really, this, I'm just wanting to have some type of an overlay that's not necessarily historic, but just preserves the quality of the homes there. And I think that through this, we can do that and still allow people to build. We have a lot of things we want to do on the house still that have not been done, but I think within these contexts, it would be completely reasonable to do those improvements.
Hi, my name is Chris Townsend, and as my wife said, I'm at 4502 Colorado Avenue as well. We support this overlay from the standpoint of preserving and protecting our neighborhood and our street and the way that it looks at this point without having something, we live next door to a house that is a duplex right now that can be torn down, and two tall, skinny houses could be built right next door. The side setback on that house is very small as well, because it was grandfathered in, I think, a long time ago by the, the owner that owns the, the house there. My concern is that my bathroom's on that side. If I've got a tall, two-story, skinny house that's right next door to me, that's 10 foot, 15 feet from that window, they're looking right into my bathroom. I think we have to use some reason in some of the things in the new construction that takes place. I think this is a reasonable solution for meeting the concerns of both sides. My wife had said that we have some, you know, some additions and things like that and improvements that we want to make as well, and we think that this zoning overlay allows us to be able to, and has the flexibility allowing us to make those, you know, updates and if we needed to add on, I think that we would be able to do that as well without changing the integrity of the street and the way that it looks. So for a lot of people, I think, that oppose based on that, that side of the argument, I guess, I think you will find that you do have the ability to make those changes without having to have something torn down completely and have two tall, what looked like to me, two trailers stacked on top of each other. And so we're very supportive of this and have been. We feel like that because it is a small area, the majority of the neighbors, you know, in this, in the boundaries of this overlay are very supportive, I think. So we appreciate your, your vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Laura Rodriguez. My husband and I bought our house at 4503 Colorado Avenue in 1982, so we've been there and seen a lot of change. When we bought in the neighborhood, we were the young whippersnappers, and it was all a bunch of old people around us. And in the years we've been there, now we're the, you know, my daughter lives there now, but it's still our house, and we're the old people in the neighborhood. So having seen the changes over the years, I think there have been changes that would still fall under the, the regulations in this zoning. For example, we added on to our house that you, our house is the top-left one, the gray one, and you can't tell that we added on to the back of our house. So I think there are ways that, that people can still have improvements in their house, especially older houses. Our house, we were told, was built in 190 something, and so I think you can still make the changes and make the updates, but still keep the houses and the neighborhood and the, and the style that they are.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Allison Kirk. I live at 4510 Colorado Avenue. I've only been in Sylvan Park for 28 years. My house has been there 111, and I hope it's going to be there long after I'm gone. I'm in favor of zoning, which will encourage a thoughtful approach to modifications to our neighborhood. It has a lot of charm. I love it. Many people love it, and I want to keep that charm that drew us all there to begin with. Thanks.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. Councilman, any final?
So I will, I've got a card, and we'll sit down and talk to Hannah and see, you know, how, how this is going to affect her and how that plays out. I think what you've heard today, though, is, is some overwhelming support for this, and so I do ask that you move forward with it, and I will speak to Hannah and get with her prior to planning whenever we're there next. Lost track, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, closed public hearing. Any discussion or motion?
From the staff report, you can see that this area, even as small as it is, contains, you know, the predominant number of contributing houses and therefore would meet the Secretary of Interior standards as well as the guidelines have been viewed.
I'm, I'm excited to see this, and I know, early on, when the conservation guidelines came out, people were real concerned about the things that they could do to their homes, and it's just a matter of an education, but it is to preserve a neighborhood. And I think if, when you visit with her, and there are things that you can do within the guidelines and, and you're not restricted, as, as restrictive as historic, and it's a, it is, is a very positive thing. So I think it's just a matter of educating and making sure that people that buy into the area understand how to go about it and that, and to approach it the right way. So I'm excited that this, this is happening.
I'm excited that this is happening in Sylvan Park. It's been a long time coming. It's a, it's a beautiful, small, two-block area. There's some wonderful homes there. Great to see this, this happening, and I move for approval.
One more, one more comment after that.
I'm with a second. So I have a, if you don't mind, I have a motion and a second, so we're in discussion.
Councilmember, this is the third time, so, three's the charm. So thank you for your hard work and also the neighborhood, so thank you very much.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
All opposed.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so looks like we're preliminary final SP review.
So this is 1207th Avenue North. It's a final SP review of new development near the historic Elliott School in Germantown. The entire development area is shown in this aerial. In 2015, MHCC approved the bulk height, massing roof form, and site layout for the project as part of a preliminary SP review. In 2016, MHCC approved the design details for a previous design. What you're going to see today is a different revised design that is different from what was previously approved. And the application before you today only involves the western section of the development at the northeast corner of 7th Avenue North and Madison Street. It's my understanding the applicant's going to return with revisions to the rest of the development, but today it's just the section of the development that we're looking at. So here's the site plan. In the previous application approved by MHCC, there was a mix of apartment buildings and townhouses. In the, under the current plan, it is just townhouses as proposed for this part of the development. The project involves seven townhouses facing Madison Street, three townhouses facing 7th Avenue North. Note how these townhouses step back to transition from the new townhouse development to the smaller historic house next door on 7th Avenue North. And then finally, the project includes two alley houses that face the alley. Vehicular access to the site will be via the existing alley. The street-facing townhouse units have attached parking on the interior of the lot, which will not be visible from the street. The alley houses have attached parking that face the alley. Here are the facades of the townhouses facing Madison Street. Although the project has changed from an apartment building to townhouses, the overall height and scale of the new design is similar to what MHCC previously approved. The new townhouse design is three stories with a primary The new townhouse design is three stories with a primary height of 39 to 41 feet, depending upon the grade. Even with the stair bulkheads that you can see on the rendering, the townhouses will still be below the maximum height of 46 feet that was set in the SP zoning. And just for reference, across the street, the Elliott School is 46 feet tall. Here are the townhouses facing 7th Avenue North. Their height and scale match what was previously approved and what was set in the SP plan. The two townhouses closer to the historic one-story house at 2807 7th Avenue North will be two stories in height, and again, that's the transition from the taller townhouse development to the more smaller-scale, single-family residences of 7th Avenue North. The proposed buildings will not have to find foundation lines. The brick or metal facade material will extend to grade. Staff recommends that there be a change of material to show a foundation line, as historically structures had a delineated foundation line. Staff has worked with the applicant, and they have agreed to do a low stone sill to match the conditions of the historic Elliott School across the street, and staff finds this to be appropriate. Here are the facades of the two alley houses. They will be two stories and approximately 29 feet tall, so they will be subordinate to the development facing the primary streets. And here are just some renderings of the project. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the conditions that there be a change of material at the foundation line. And again, the applicant's solution to do a low stone sill is appropriate in staff's opinion. There'd be, that staff approve the brick and stone samples, the metal cladding color and texture, the windows and doors, the balcony design and stair railing, design and materials, that the mechanical systems be located on the roof or in the interior of the development, that staff approve any fences or walls, and that staff approve all exterior lighting and appurtenances. With these conditions, staff finds that the project to meet the design guidelines for the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. And I believe the architect is here.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. Thanks, Melissa. The architect would like, you're good? Okay. Okay, the, for the record, the architect has said everything's good. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing an enclosed public hearing? Discussion or motion?
Move to the doc, staff recommendation, 4507 Benton Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion, second, and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay, motion carries. Violation, 737 Benton Avenue.
737 Benton Avenue is in the Woodland and Waverly District. I think a lot of times what you usually see are things that are in the neighborhood conservation zoning overlays where we don't review paint. But for masonry buildings in the historic preservation zoning overlays, you do review paint, and you have always required that it be a historic brick color. This one was already painted, so repainting is appropriate, but as you can see, they started to paint it white without a preservation permit. So our recommendation is to allow for it to be repainted, that's fine, but that it be a historic brick color. Any questions for me?
Is existing paint, you know, sometimes you'll see a sort of a stained brick or something that's more fluid than, than a coating of, of paint. Is there, has anybody been out to sort of have a look at this and make a recommendation for one versus the other? Okay.
And it is paint, paint, and you're right, if this building had never been painted, but it met the requirements to be painted, we would really encourage a stain rather than a paint, so more of that original texture can show through, but this one's already had a heavy coat of paint on it.
Okay. Any more questions for Robin? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward, state your name and address?
It's clearly homes like mine that you're here to protect, so thank you for hearing this. And I'll just say, I understand that our role as, as owner is that of custodian and of caretaker, so I'm not here to make any waves. And also sorry that I have found myself in the violation section of this, this hearing. It was not my intention. If it, if it had not been for misreading of the, the zoning handbook, I would have done this by application, so. There was no disrespect meant in changing the color. There was an awful lot of repair work to the mortar that needed to be done. We hired a painter, his name's Doug Nelson. He'd, he's worked on a number of the properties on the Battery in Charleston, so he's done a lot of historic preservation work. And we'd sort of toyed with the idea of changing the color, but, but the, you know, that was between me and my wife, so we've, you know, she was a proponent for lighter color, and as we sort of got into the project, the painter noted how much more repair work he was doing on the east and north-facing sides of the house, like the sun-facing sides, and he'd suggested a lighter color. So we did a lot of the trim work, a lot of the repair work, a lot of the mortar work, and then spent an afternoon painting. On the morning of the second, the second morning of the painting, Fred, Mr. Zahn, came by and said that we, several neighbors had complained and that we were in violation, so we stopped all painting at that point. And I went back and said, I talked to Fred on the phone, and he said it was an application, required an application, but he did not feel that it would be approved. But if we chose to go that way, we should go ahead and put in the application. So after July 4th, or I guess just before July 4th, we did put in the application just to see. It's, I don't think the, the color was disrespectful or historically not relevant. I think it was more that it was placed on red brick that had previously been painted. So our, our ask of, of the committee is to review the, the pink color. I think there's, there's a lot of red brick on our house, on our street, and I've honestly met more of our neighbors in the last two weeks commenting on how good the, the white looks than I had in, in all of the time before. So, you know, clearly not, not here to make waves and don't, no disrespect to the rules, but, you know, it's a beautiful house, and we think it looks very good white, but I understand why the, the rules were, were put in place. Just a, a point of clarification, in the Woodland and Waverly Historic Preservation Design, it defines historic properties as properties built between 1900 and 1939. I was curious as to why, when that was written, it didn't include the houses built before. Like, our house was built in 1892, so I think it, it falls outside the guidelines, but still within the intent of, of what was, what was written. So again, with all, with all respect, we, you, you have a, a single coat viewing of what it would look like in, in white, and you can see from the repaired and, and sort of messy side, and then also the historic pictures of the house, what it would look like, what it looked like in this red. So that's what I got, so thank you for hearing it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing an enclosed public hearing? Discussion?
Well, I'll, I'll say it. I'm in a red brick home, and I've said I never would live in a red brick home, in an old red brick home, but I do. And I certainly appreciate the, the guidelines and their putting in place to preserve the, not just your home, but the neighborhood. And I think in making exceptions, we're opening up a can of worms because, I mean, the guidelines, we've stuck with them, and we don't want to set a precedent. And so I make a motion that we support the staff recommendation to paint the brick color at 737 Benton Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion from anyone? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay, motion carries.
Good afternoon. This is an application for new construction of a two-family structure on this vacant lot. The proposed new building is a story and a half with a height of 27 feet from grade. It is 39 feet wide. The height and width are within the range established by the neighboring contributing buildings. The front setback is shown at 34, 3 inches, which is approximately two feet back from recently approved infill at 712 Shelby last year. So staff recommends this as a condition of approval, that the new building's front setback match that next door. Materials include a split-face block foundation, shingled roof. The cladding will be fiber cement siding and cedar shakes in the gable fields. Staff observed some of the window sets don't show mullions between them and recommends that as a condition of approval. Staff finds that the proposed design meets the design guidelines for materials, orientation, and proportion rhythm of openings. The applicant has worked with staff to get the building to comply with the guidelines for building and roof shape. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed new construction, and with the conditions that the front setback match the recently approved infill next door, that the finished floor height is consistent with those of adjacent historic houses, approval of roofing color, porch columns, windows and doors, that double and triple windows have a four- to six-inch mullion between them, and that the HVAC and other utilities are located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint. Staff finds that the proposal meets Section 3B2 for new construction in the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
Okay, any questions? Paul?
The applicant is here, if you have questions.
Any questions for the staff? Okay, thanks, Paul. Would the applicant like to come forward? Okay, for the record, the applicant is, says okay. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing an enclosed public hearing? Discussion or motion?
I drove by that, this house this afternoon, and it is a very small lot. And I just want to say that I appreciate the work that staff has done on this to, to make it conform with these wonderful houses on this street. And I would like to make a motion to approve the construction of the staff recommendation at 714 Shelby Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick one. Often we'll see on, on these duplexes, or sometimes we'll see, not often, there's a dividing, someone will take the front porch and divide it, which is certainly, I've not seen a scenario where that's appropriate. It's not indicated on the plans. Those are dimension lines that are on the plans. But for clarity, wanted the record to reflect that, not now, and hopefully not any time in the future, that the division of a front porch element would be acceptable or meeting the guidelines.
Okay, duly noted. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay, motion carries. Okay, 816 and 818 Shelby Avenue.
This application is to construct single-family dwellings and detached outbuildings on each of these two adjacent vacant lots. The two buildings will be more or less identical, except sort of mirror images of each other. The principal buildings will be two and a half stories with an additional half-story in the basement that's partially above grade. The primary form of the buildings is, is hipped roof, sort of in the line of a four-square Craftsman-style, with front and rear gabled dormers, a round projecting front bay and round side bay, and a flat roof section at the rear that has a roof deck. Looking more closely at the front elevation, the floor is actually set well above the grade, or well above the foundation line, I should say, foundation line above the windows. And then the floor level at the highest point would actually be about seven feet above grade. The context of this block is houses with floor levels as low as one foot above grade at 800 and 802, which are at the end of the block, 814 and 812 Shelby being the closest, or 812 at least being the closest historic house, has a foundation that's one to three feet, or a floor level one to three feet above grade. The street does slope from, slope down from west going east, but it, it flattens out at this lot, and in fact, they've been graded and terraced with a retaining wall. So these lots are remarkably flat. Houses across the street have tall foundations, and they have retaining walls and, and grade in the front yards as well. But in addition to sloping down to the east, the lots on that side of the street slope down to the south, so naturally they'll have a higher floor level and foundation at the front. The two lots in blue for this proposed development, as I said, are relatively flat, remarkably flat. Considering the actual grade and the context of this, this street, particularly this side of the street, staff finds that the relative heights of the building, the two buildings, would not be appropriate. The front elevations also show a pair of Juliet balconies on the front facades. This type of element does not exist anywhere in the neighborhood. Plus, in doing this, you have doors essentially on the second story, and typically historic houses, or houses in the historic district, I should say, have proportions of the first story windows and window openings are taller than any upper-story windows above. So staff finds that these proportions and the presence of the Juliet balconies is not appropriate. The center bay has this semi-circular projection out over the porch, and there it is from the side. In some ways, this reads like a covered porch or an enclosed porch. And in the context, looking around, sort of in, looking at it in that light, two-story porches are, are rare. Covered two-story porches are even more rare, and enclosed second-story porches just do not exist in the context or in the surrounding area. Looking at some of these, you see there, the top two images show rounded porches, so, you know, that's not necessarily the issue. Those do exist. 816 Russell has a shallow projecting bay on the second story. That one projects less than two feet, when that type of feature is typically called an Oriole, Oriole window. And 714 has enclosed space above the porch, but whereas the proposed has enclosed space projecting from the building, 714 Russell, that enclosed space actually is the primary facade of the building, and then the porch is recessed from it. So it's sort of the, we see that as being the reverse. Also, there are, as I said, two-story porches. The top two show two stories where the second is uncovered. 920 Russell even has a, a round element, but that one's, again, tall and skinny, and it's engaged and set within the, the primary mass of the building, not necessarily projecting like the proposed. 514 and 16 Russell Street do have covered porches, but as you can see, those porches are, well, they're, they're open, they're not enclosed. And the one that does project from the, the main facade, 516 Russell, again, is very small and, and fairly open in nature, and it only projects two feet from the, the main facade of the building. So staff felt that the proposed enclosed projection from the, the main facade of the building was, was not compatible with the context. So also in the, the side elevation, again, they're mirrored, so one side we found had pretty typical window proportions, window rhythm. So one side we found had pretty typical window proportions, window rhythm. The one shown here is 33-foot wide primary width with only one window opening, a set of paired windows on each story. Staff felt that additional fenestration would be needed to break up that long facade. As I said, there were outbuildings proposed behind each structure at the rear of the lot. Staff finds that the outbuildings actually meet the design guidelines with one exception. The buildings have 18-foot tall eve height, eve to floor level, whereas the guidelines and the code limit eve height to 17 feet. Summing all of that up, staff recommends disapproval of the proposed infill at 816 and 818 Shelby Avenue, finding the proposal does not meet the guidelines for new construction in the Edgefield Historic Preservation District pertaining to height, scale, setbacks, proportion and rhythm of openings, outbuildings, building shape and roof form, and that additional information would be needed to analyze the project in terms of materials and pertinences.
Okay. Thanks. Any questions for staff?
Sean, would it, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I guess, would it be an accurate statement, given the examples that you've shown, that the element over the front door being read as most prominent to the house, as opposed to at least, in many ways, equivalent to the examples you showed, but with some proportion of openings and the way that the railings and things were treated, that the entry certain, like where you go in is not recessed, but is maybe the most prominent element on the house?
Yeah. I think that's correct. I mean, porches are prominent on, on many houses, but the, the scale of having the prominence weighted to the second story is certainly not typical.
Any more questions? Okay. Thanks. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
It does appear to be just clarifications of what you've already seen and not a new plan.
Okay. Great.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Mitch Hodge. I'm the architect for this project. Steve Bird is, he's the owner, he's also here. We have been working on the project for a few months. He, he lives in the neighborhood, and coincidentally, he lives in a house that I designed that won a preservation award a couple of years ago. And when we first met, he was raving about it, and I told him I know that house well. So anyway, but Steve is, he's building, he purchased these properties a few months ago, and we were looking at the options of what to do with them. They are zone two-family. His goal is a house for him and also his parents here. As you see, there's been a lot of two-family, I'll just call them duplexes. That's what, you know, that come up. But he opted to go the route of two single-family residence with the dada in the back, feeling that that would be more appropriate, more in scale with the neighborhood through there. The handout I gave you, we've been going through the process. We've had a few meetings with Sean, Steve, Sean and I had met, and he's expressed some concerns about the front element and that, but we didn't realize until we got the report that there were five distinct points there, and we felt they were, we didn't realize it was that harsh. He commented, he liked the porch, but he didn't know if it was appropriate. Same with the Juliet balconies, but he didn't know if it was appropriate. So we were kind of on the, on the fence there. He did give us a heads up, it could be disapproved, but we didn't realize it was this weighted towards that. So that said, we've been working with Sean. We had a lengthy conversation yesterday about the things, and I asked him, there's certain points on here that are easy, easy fixes that I've already done, and I've, that's what you'll see in front of you. And also, this handout here just basically takes the points. This is just our response or revisions that we've made. There's, there's some simple issues, and I could go with those, over those point by point. The first, I'm just going through them right here. The first one is, is the height of that. We didn't realize, actually until now, I thought that Sean told us yesterday that the height wasn't actually the issue, that the, that the front porch, the lodge, the long steps going up to them was the issue through there. So the height itself, if you look at some of the drawings, we've, I've built a model since then, I've also built a model of the adjacent houses. You can see that the height itself is very close in height to the house, right next door at 820 Shelby. Whoops. Excuse me. This is right here. So it fits right there, as well as, as you can see on the overhead. The overhead shot, all of these houses just adjacent to it, there are actually three stories that face just next to, next to our properties here. So we, again, I had just been reading that the, that he thought maybe the porch, the floor level was, not, not the height itself. But that said, as you can see in the overhead, there's several four-squares about the size of this house, if not larger than this. So we felt that was appropriate, but we did lower the first floor level so that it appears that the floor level is more in tune with what's around the neighborhood. It's not 1 foot off the ground. I don't know any four-squares that have just a porch 1 foot off the ground. So that said, the next issue was the scale of the house. Those are confusing, I think, height and scale. Again, this was, you know, it's compatible with the houses through that. What we did, the, the height itself was not the issue, but what we did in bringing that first floor up, a lot of these homes have 12-foot ceilings. We don't need that now. So we basically raised the first floor up so that we could take advantage of a basement space and make it livable space, and making the footprint of the house significantly smaller. The footprint of the house is only 40, right around 48 feet deep. You'll see a lot of the duplexes you've approved get to 70, 75 feet deep. So we've, we've decreased the footprint of this house significantly. I'm a big fan of yards, and so is he, so we just did not feel like it was, we felt that this was a better solution. You can see on the front page here, this footprint is not much bigger than the one-story bungalow right next door as well. It's, it's in line with the three here. And you can see how much grass or yard we have in the middle. The back sheet, and this was, when he first came to me, I was wondering, because these, these properties, dirt is no longer cheap, you know, or significant, so I was giving him ideas how to basically max it out. The back sheet shows, shows a site plan that if we had to take that basement space out and basically add it to the other two floors, this is basically what it does to the yard. Now, there's an additional comment about the setback I'll get to, but we'll probably have 20 feet between the dada and the house, which, again, that's something that you guys have approved, but we would prefer to have the yard in there. We feel like, and I'm sure the neighbors on South 9th Street would prefer to be looking over yard instead of the side of a house. Let's see. The third item, that's a simple one, the setbacks. As we were going through the design, I got a, thought I had the recommendation from the surveyor as he did the street averages, and that's where we set it, but we'll take whatever staff or zoning tells us to set it back. That's a, that's an easy one, if it's a few feet. So that's not an issue. The, the next item, proportion and rhythm of openings, this is dealing with the Juliet balconies on the, on the front of the house, as well as the windows on the side. I did have those windows on the side, but obviously it wasn't enough. So you'll see on the, on the drawings here, the side elevations on A5, I've clouded all the changes that we've made, just these minor. But we've replaced the front Juliet balconies with double-hung windows. And then we've also spaced the windows on the side elevations to comply with the guidelines. So I feel like we've, we've resolved that.
One real question, just before we, so it seems like, I guess, Sean, so there are, he has made changes to these. Is this your first time seeing it, or are you following?
Yeah. This is my first time seeing this, the revisions to this front elevation.
I sent these yesterday, yeah. Because we had the conversation late. It wasn't, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Well, just, so we, I don't want to put too much of a burden on Sean. I guess, you know, if you feel comfortable, if you guys feel comfortable where we're going with it, I guess I should say we feel comfortable, but, but we'll keep going, but we typically like them to see it first, this?
I understand, and we didn't, again, we didn't, we didn't, until we got the report, see these other comments, and that's why I felt that we had to go ahead and address them. Some of them are very simple. The, moving on, the next item is the eve height on the accessory building. It was 18. I've got that lowered down to, to 17 feet, so it complies now. And I think, I mean, the big issue is the, the front. I think that front form seems to be one of the main issues. We wanted, these houses, single, you know, they're single-family houses, so we wanted to come up with an element that would engage the house more with the, the streetscape there. So we didn't feel like putting a porch all the way across, a covered porch all the way across would be a good idea, because it's, it's on the north side, so it would only darken up the interior spaces of the house. So we've come up with a round element, the sticks partially in on the, on the main floor and halfway out, just as a nice, again, a nice gathering porch there. And then it's covered, we've got a room upstairs. It's a circular room that gives more of a panoramic view of downtown and Shelby Avenue through there. It's, it's not a copy of the bays that we see. I mean, there seems, we're struggling to find a match in the neighborhood, but as I understand the guidelines, we're not trying to copy historic elements. This is an interpretation of the bay, and frankly, with the building technology we have today, we can, you know, it's doable. And, you know, we, this was a big element on the house, that they could have a gathering room at the front of the house, as well as a porch just to sit out, something comfortable just to gather out through. Again, going through, we've seen numerous examples of houses, even in the previous slide, that are taller than this in the neighborhood. They have that element there, so we don't think it came out of, you know, dropped out of the sky. And there's, there's always been, it's been a little confusing when, for some reason, we're comparing this, trying to find a match in the neighborhood, but even in previous metals, when someone comes up with metal standing seam siding on walls, or they come up with a flat roof or large expanses of glass, I'm curious why there's absolutely no historic context for that to stand, to stand on, but yet they get approved. But if we start inching towards something that's a more traditional form, then suddenly we've got to play match game and find something that hits it exactly, instead of allowing for just an interpretation on here. So as you can see, we've, I think we've addressed, I've got them labeled revisions or responses as to why we have. We've addressed most of the issues here, and we've just asked for approval on this. They're very, he's, he's very excited, his parents are moving down here and wanting the house, so. And we're moving forward today because we really need to see which direction we're going. Again, if, if, if there's some things that don't move, we had a discussion with Sean, we may need to go to a, drop back to the duplex option through there if, if we've got to reduce the height, which is, again, it's, it's as tall as some two-story houses in the neighborhood. So we hope not to do that, but we'd like to ask, ask for approval for this. And Steve, the owner here, he's like, he'd like to, oh, go ahead.
Okay. I, I actually applaud the effort that you've put into it, that this looks like you've tried to, you know, really start working with it. The only difficulty is we are in a situation where we, we like for them to be able to review all the changes first, so we really, we can really, you know, we're really more kind of bound to what was originally done. So, and it's just a lot to kind of go through, and, you know, and I think Sean needs time to make sure he feels good about it, but we're not necessarily feel good about it, but gets a chance to, to take, you know, to look through it a little bit more. So I, but I, so I want to just make sure you understand, we could, we could, we're going to still be have to go on what was originally posed, just because of all the different. Now, you, we could recommend, I don't know if it's, if it's a, you could defer it, give them a chance to make these, you know, to review these, and then, you know, we may be able to be real easy next time. Or, and of course, even if we, you know, still go for it with the staff recommendation, you can bring it back, but, you know, like, the problem is when we get to this, and then we're going back and trying to figure out, well, what, what was here and what was there? And it's, it's, it's just difficult for our commission to get into trying to review the design at this time.
Right. And I understand that. If we were, if we were giving more of a heads up before this report came out, I mean, I could have, I obviously would have had the time, but some of these items weren't even discussed eve height. We didn't even know, so I've...
Well, I applaud you trying to get to it. It's just, it puts us in a...
Yeah. I wanted to get this, but I guess, I don't know what, I kind of don't see a point in deferring it if it's, if it's going out, because Steve would also like to know what direction is this going? If this is, if this is going in the right direction, that's great, and we'll come back, or we'll continue to work with staff. Sean's been very good about meeting with the owners and I.
Can I make a suggestion that, that, I mean, that we actually have some discussion and, and give him, give direction in our response to our concerns? And that would give them a little bit of direction, maybe staff some...
Well, my only, my only concern about that is that we could be, you know, we're, we're seeing it for the same time staff is seeing it. I think I would...
No, I'm talking about just responding to the original application.
Oh, not, Sean could...
No, not, not the changes, but the original application.
And some of the things have already been addressed, so if you have that right, yes.
But, but some of those things, we still have, we as a group might still have concerns about, even though you've addressed it, you feel like you've addressed it, we might not feel that way. But, I mean, I just think a discussion might be helpful, but, I mean, is that appropriate?
Well, it's, it's definitely appropriate. I guess I'll see what the other commissioners, I, I could see a little confusion though, myself, of like, well, wait a minute, but we're gonna, this part was a little bit changed, not a little bit, but, but I'm open. I'm, I'm a democratic approach.
I think what Commissioner Nielsen is saying, we just, I mean, no offense to you, we disregard everything you just said.
Yes.
And we go with the original plan. That was currently from staff for disapproval, and we discuss it amongst ourselves, and then at least give staff a little guidance on what we're just thinking about those plans, the original plans.
Okay. So all commissioners are okay with reviewing what was, what do you feel like, man?
I think we're, we're bound to do that. If the applicant doesn't want to defer, there's no harm, and if, if after discussion there is a disapproval, then he comes back next month, if they choose, then no harm done. And if it's approved as submitted or with staff comments, then so be it.
We are bound, but I was going to make a recommendation that they might think about deferring.
I understand, and I appreciate the time, and I don't want to waste time on this, but this is, I understand how it works, that they only have so much authority to approve things, and you're, you can go beyond that. So we actually discussed this yesterday, that if you could give a little guidance, that would be helpful for this process if we do have to come back next month. So anyway.
All right. So we will keep going, but just disregard everything you've said up to now? That's what I didn't want to really do, but I, we'll, we'll keep going with it. But with that, I think we may be a little over, but you were gonna, did you want to say something? Okay. Yeah. Please come forward. State your name and address.
You're laughing because I look like George Clooney, right?
I was gonna say George. What are you trying to...
Yeah. Yeah, my name's Steve Bird. I am the applicant. And I at least want to give you a little bit of background, I won't be long, on why I purchased these properties and what my plans were with them in relation to what you've got looking, you're looking at now. I bought these in December of 2016. I live two blocks away. I've lived in East Nashville, but down at 11th for the last three years. My parents are in ill health. My mother just turned 82. We had a birthday party for her last week. She's been battling Alzheimer's for 14 years, an amazing woman, second woman to ever graduate from Michigan Law. I have to give my mom some kudos. And my father has had both of his hips replaced just recently, the second one. So the purpose of these homes was for me to live in one, my parents to live in the other, that would be compatible for elderly people. My sister and her family would move into the home with them to help be caregivers. So that, that was the purpose of having two homes right next to each other. And so these lots became available. I thought it was great. They were in the neighborhood that I like, and they would be perfect for two homes. At the time I bought this, the church that was there was a 40... lots became available. I thought it was great, they were in the neighborhood that I like, and they would be perfect for two homes. At the time I bought this, the church that was there was a 40 by 80 foot footprint, so a very large footprint, right next to the bungalow that's often used as a comparable. To the left, 820, that lot has three homes, as you see in the aerial, that are all multi-stories and a combined 60 and 800 square foot under roof. So it seemed like this plan wasn't out of parameters based on what was there before and what was right next door. If that is the case, Sean has been wonderful to work with, he's met with me twice, he did take time on the phone yesterday, so I'm happy to work with the staff in whatever capacity is necessary, and Sean has been very good to work with. With respect to just a couple points that you guys will be voting on later, one that you just did, 714, one of the reasons why this plan is rejected, it's a 37-foot front, which is smaller than the church that was there, but with the three-foot bay in the rear half of the building, that's being rejected for out of, out of width at 40 feet. You just approved a project that's a much smaller home at 39-foot width, and I know that there's another one that you're voting on, 719 Shelby, those are all within a block, that's also 39 feet for an outbuilding. So I do realize that the commission and the staff has the ability to go outside some of those parameters. We tried to stay within the parameter at 37 feet for the frontage, with then having the three-foot element in the rear part of the building. One other one that I know you'll be voting on is 716, 720 Russell, which is a 44 by 73 foot footprint, two and a half stories. That is two blocks away. That will be a duplex, but that's obviously a very large property and only two blocks from where I'm going to be building. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate you guys allowing me to speak. I am new to, this is my first meeting, so it's been at least enjoyable for me. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant, and including Mitch, before releasing them? Any question for the architect? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to speak regarding this project?
Hello, sorry, wasn't, I would have dressed nicer if I knew I was coming here today. My name's John Todd, I live at 502 South 9th Street, so you can see sort of my house in some of these pictures that you're looking at. And I bought that house a few years ago with a reasonable reliance that it would adhere to the historic overlay of the area. That's, was a, is a big reason why I and some of my neighbors bought, where we bought, as opposed to other parts of the east side that aren't necessarily beholden to different height and with restrictions. And the proposed building design that we saw, actually, we saw it on the, on the Edgefield Facebook group, and there are some other people on this, on the site, on the group looking at the plans with some surprise, because the plans were significantly larger than pretty much everything that's around it. As you can see in the pictures that have been brought up there, it doesn't really fit within the character of the street and barely looks to fit height-wise and width-wise with everything else that's there. In fact, my home and my neighbors' homes, which are slightly above the hill going eastbound, by the looks of these designs, not only would these houses block any sort of view that we have of downtown that the gentleman was talking about as a plus of this construction, but also our bedroom windows will look directly into these new homes, so requiring, I guess, us to keep our shades down for the entirety of the time that we live there. I don't think we're asking for anything special, we're just sort of asking to adhere to the overlay that's already in place, as has been recommended by staff and by our council member, Mr. Withers, who I know my neighbors and I, we've all spoke to by email about this situation, because it was pretty concerning to us. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. Would anyone else like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Seeing now enclosed public hearing, discussion.
I live in this neighborhood, and the concern, one of the concerns that I have is the transition that these homes, the heights of these homes make to the, to the, to the west. And I appreciate the fact that they've lowered the foundation and are making an effort to get them in a smooth transition around the streetscape, but I just, I still don't see that it's enough. And I appreciate Sean bringing out all the similarities of that front porch, but I don't see that that, and the depth of the projection is significant compared to what's in, is representative of the neighborhood. So those are my, two of my concerns. The, the other concern I have is the perception that we're now getting into the tall and skinnies, because they're three stories, and that, and that's just not what we will want to reflect in Edgefield, so.
And just to remind us, we got a lot of public, or a few public comments on this and emails from Robin, including from the council person, who couldn't be here today, as the neighbor mentioned, but just, I was glancing through those today when we got them, but all against, or for staff recommendation to disapprove.
I previously brought this up, and while I understand and respect Mitch, the architect's statement that, you know, to copy is not, is not a requirement necessarily, and that this is an interpretation, I think, rather than saying it's not like this, or it's not like that, in terms of the guidelines, from the front facade, and specifically the front porch, is that when I, when I look at the images, the projecting bay is the most prominent thing on, on the house. And one can make an argument, given other properties in the neighborhood, that it doesn't, that that's not necessarily prohibited, and could use that to sort of buttress that argument. I think the absence of columns or some sense of entry that the entrance is recessed back from is, is hard to overcome in evaluating a circular projecting bay, which the circle in itself is, you know, is not necessarily the issue as much as it is, this thing is on the front of the house, and it's the thing. It's almost, it's architecture, perhaps, at, you know, the speed of a car, and maybe not taking as much into account the pedestrian experience, or the more fine-grained appearance of a, of a traditional, leaning more traditional new home. Does that mean it has to have columns? No, I think my comment stands in that the entrance doesn't read as, it reads as subordinate to the other elements on the house, and I think that is not something that the guidelines would encourage, and not something that is occurring in historic homes in the neighborhood.
You got something?
Well, just, just driving by, it, it seems like, you know, it's on the edge of the historic buildings going down the street, and right beside it, going all the way up, it seems like we have all these new houses, tall houses. And so it seems like we're trying to draw a line, and I know people are, and I appreciate everybody coming out and talking about this today, but I just have a little bit of discomfort of just showing all the older houses and not really showing the brand-new tall houses that are right next door, and just, where do we draw that line? And why were the houses next door approved that are the same height, seem to be the same height?
I can maybe answer some of those questions.
Okay.
In terms of context, you do look at the historic context and not new construction? Because some of the new construction maybe was before the overlay?
I got you.
I don't know off the top of my head which ones are which. And too new is, is new, and your role is to preserve the historic character.
And a little bit of history is that, that side of Shelby was added after the original application for the historic Edgefield. So that was after, I don't quite know the date.
What was there in those lots that are now?
I don't know that there's.
It was a church.
It was a church. They've been vacant for a long, long time.
That's what you said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, I think we have the opportunity to get to a solution on this. Clearly, the staff, the owner, the architect have expressed a desire to address the issues that have been raised. I think the comments here should give some direction as well, and I would really encourage the owner and architect to work with the neighborhood, with the council person as well, since I think we received more opposition on this one item than anything else on the agenda today. So I would encourage, you know, that dialogue and conversation with the neighborhood as well. But I'd look forward to seeing this come back in the future, in a form that would be more acceptable to, not only to the commission, the staff, but also the neighborhood and the councilman.
Couple of, like, these are finer, I guess, design points, as it seemed to be the, the, one of the requests is just, you know, to hear and fully, fully discuss the application. I, this may be a rendering, an issue of rendering, but I was, I'm curious, in the three-dimensional view from the northwest, the stairs don't, the stairs appear to be, you know, like a stair that isn't founded on, on a foundation, they sort of connect the grade to a porch element that makes it read less massive, maybe more, more tenuous. Again, that may be just purely an issue of rendering, and that the stone doesn't come around and sort of wrap, wrap that front stair entry, but I think that, again, would be an element that wouldn't necessarily be something that you, it goes towards, in my mind, away from compliance, as opposed to being more fitting and settling the house as a mass with the foundation, that the stair makes it even a more tenuous relationship, if it is floating, but, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Answered, no, no worries, I just, sometimes, yeah, sometimes we don't, if we don't see these things, we get surprised, all right? So forget all that.
But I think in that respect, too, the other thing that has come up as, as far as a lot of discussion, is the element of the circular room above the, the front porch. And I have noticed on a lot of homes, not as much the contemporary ones, but the historical ones, that an element that is massive over an open porch, a lot of times tends to be heavy and sort of throw the weight of the building, the contextual weight of the building out of kilter. And so I think it just needs a lot of attention to see how that would be handled, if that's indeed an essential part of the element.
I might have missed, but in the evaluation, did you all address the dada? And that was, that was, there were, there were no issues with the dada?
The one issue with that was the eve height, which the applicant said they've already made or would be willing to.
Okay.
To change. They did in the drawings that.
Yeah, I couldn't remember.
Any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
Do we have more discussion?
No, I don't. I mean, we're, we're voting on the application as is, is that our understanding?
Yes.
I'll vote, I mean, I'll make a motion to adopt staff recommendation.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion. I'll oppose, and motion carries. Okay. 716 and 720 Russell Street. This is one of my cases as well. Let's get back to the beginning here. Somewhat of a similar situation. This is another pair of adjacent vacant lots, and a proposal to construct infill on the two lots. This one will be, I grabbed the wrong sheet. I was going to read the last one again. All right. 716 and 720 Russell Street, again, two vacant lots, and a proposal to construct infill on each of the two lots. These will each be duplexes, side by side, two and a half stories tall, and each will have an outbuilding at the rear, a shared outbuilding used for each of the two lots. The two buildings will have essentially identical plans or mirrored plans, I guess, again, and they will have a massing of 40 feet, the primary width, broken up with multiple planes there, and bays on the two sides, one on each side that's two feet deep, bringing the maximum width to 44 feet wide. These lots are 59 feet wide, roughly 20% larger than the standard lot width, which is part of the justification for buildings being wider than the typical infill you'd see on a 40-foot, or a 50-foot wide lot. The buildings will be 35 feet tall total from grade, with the floor to eve heights approximate or proportional to typical historic two-story houses. These buildings will each have a pair of porches set out to the sides, and as you can see, the buildings will be, or the two units of each building will be differentiated by window treatments, fairly balanced but asymmetrical, and by different, differing roof forms, one with a gable, one with a dormer. Side elevations, sorry, that got cut off. But the, the plans show that the, the side elevations are broken by articulating wall planes, changes in materials, and both left and right would have fairly compatible rhythm and proportion of, of windows. The materials, primary materials are brick, clavoured siding on the center portion there, and then screened porches at the, the very rear of each building. And there's the rear, again, rear porches, those doors would actually inset on the, sort of the main mass of the building, the porches would project. I guess I don't have a picture of the outbuilding, but each one would have a, a one-story outbuilding, and they would not have a dada portion component, because the lots are duplex-eligible and occupied by the primary building. No additional units proposed for the outbuilding. This is the adjacent historic house, 714 Russell Street, and I showed this one as an example in the previous case. Two and a half story Dutch Renaissance Revival, I think we call that style. There are a few others, roughly that, that size and scale and style on Russell Street. Russell Street is a little different than Shelby in that there are, there are a few two-story houses on Shelby, but Russell Street, there are several, perhaps even the majority of, well, that's the only house in the 700 block. The 500 and 600 blocks have several, the 800 block of Russell probably is majority two-story. But the context is mixed. There are one-story houses, including 800 Russell Street, which is directly across South 8th Street from the lots for the current proposal. There is the outbuilding. Like I said, one story, 25 feet tall, meets the design guidelines. Staff recommends approval of the new construction of duplexes and outbuildings at 716 and 720 Russell Street with the following conditions. Staff shall verify the floor heights are compatible with historic houses, brick window door selections, as well as the roof colors and paving materials, walkways and driveways are approved administratively, and the location of HVAC and other utilities and appurtenances, including fences, retaining walls, lighting, permanent landscape features are approved administratively. Those conditions met, staff finds that this proposal meets the guidelines for new construction in the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. Thanks, Sean. Any questions for staff?
Sean, I've got a quick one, this may be, not maybe, it probably is nitpicky, but on the planned bottom duplex, you know, the front, the facade of the front porch of that side is sort of equivalent to, or in the same plane as the projecting bay, is there any?
Is there any, is there concern about one, instead of them sort of being aligned, and this is maybe just a plan and metrics thing in three dimensions, this might be a non-issue, but to differentiate those two and make the porch more prominent just in its appearance to the front of the street?
I don't have a good answer for that. Other than staff, me, and Tim Walker have worked with the applicant, had several meetings. And some of the things that we were working on in coming up with revisions and suggestion, suggesting revisions, was to increase the prominence of the porch. And so for the last couple iterations of this, the porches have been growing and kind of meeting that, you know, the compatibility of prominent porches being a typical feature of the neighborhood.
Sure.
But in doing that, and, you know, the applicant obviously wanting to keep some individuality despite being a duplex, each one, they wanted to have some unique qualities. So I think the bays were sort of added in at about, about the last, last minute or so, right before they sent it to us. Maybe I shouldn't speculate on that. The applicant is here, but I would imagine that it was to break up the facade and differentiate. Whereas the second...
Sorry. No, I think it's effective in that way. I just, that's a, maybe a small, and again, it could be overly nitpicky of making the porch element in the, in the lower house not necessarily in the same plane. I'm not talking about five feet more, but I didn't know if that was, was of any concern or noted or even important, I guess, in terms of the staff's viewpoint. You've spoken on it.
Yeah, good. Glad you caught that.
Thanks, Sean. The applicant would like to come forward and state your name and address.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. We're pleased to present 716 and 720 Russell Street today. As Sean mentioned, we have been working closely with staff for many weeks, including some, you know, several months ago on some early sort of conceptual site plans, and then most recently last week directly with Tim and Sean to sort of make some final revisions in an effort to sort of get staff on board with the concept. And rightly said, we made several adjustments that afternoon so you could get it back on the docket. So, so we can certainly make minor adjustments there, too. Enlarging those porches was, was critical to staff, and we were happy to do it, and we can create some, some depth. We do, we did want to sort of look very closely at that facade in terms of how those sort of several elements sort of co-mingle there, and also sort of understanding that there's another one just like it sitting next door. And we've already been sort of working with staff on how those two will differentiate, differentiate themselves from one another and how we'll sort of, between roofline and architectural elements, sort of create a little bit of difference there. But generally, it was a good process, and we're excited to, to present today. Thank you.
Any questions for Michael? Port's good?
Oh, I, I think there's about two feet in there, and I can certainly, reading between the lines to make one more like the other, lessens what you're trying to do with making them side by side, you know, differentiate and different, you know, making them different from each other as far as the duplex goes, there's some nuance in there. So I, I didn't know if you, there's plenty of work that's gone to this. I don't know if you had an opinion about my comment or...
Is the comment, I assume it's in reference to the left side?
Yes, I was...
And is it fact that the bay, the bay and the porch are in line?
And the porch columns are kind of in the same line.
Yeah. I think, I think that, I think that that bay element would be, would project less than the site plan probably implies. We probably do imagine that projection as a masonry projection so that it is not sort of the ground floor twin sister to the projection that's happening on the right side of the wall. So that's probably why we drew it a little bit deeper, but I am in agreement that it needs to be, it doesn't all need to read in the same plane. And we're happy to fix that.
Okay. Any more questions for?
No, no, not, not for Michael. I just have comments.
All right. Thanks, Michael. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Seeing non-closed public hearing. You want to go first?
Yeah, I'm just curious on how the duplex relates to the rest of the street. I mean, the design, Michael certainly knows what Edgefield expects, and I've always been pleased with the things he's done, but can you talk to me about duplexes being allowed when there, there's some little property down, past the, past the school, and then you've got the church, and then the rest of the street is primarily two-story Victorian homes?
I think you know where I'm going to go. We don't review use. So if it's owned for two families, they can have two families. So there's different options for doing that. It could be side by side, as you see here. You could have one unit downstairs and one unit upstairs, one in the front, one in the back. But typically, what I believe we're hearing from developers and realtors is that those are hard to sell because one of the units is not as prominent as the other unit. So to get two units that are the same value, they want them side by side. So the duplex issue isn't our issue. What we have to deal with is design that accommodates.
And like I said, I have no issues with design. I just wanted some reaction because I think that's what we're hearing from the neighborhood is the concerns, and that's something that they would bring. Was that, that was always three lots, or was that subdivided when the big home was sold?
It was subdivided, but it's, was it, was it lots underneath, or was it a true subdivision?
There are original lot lines. It was platted as three lots. They are adjusting the width of one of the lots, like one is 65 feet, one is 55 feet, and they're going to average them to both 59 or, you know, somewhere around there.
But that's, I mean, that's, that's something that goes to the planning commission, is it not?
I don't know that it has to. Maybe for moving one of the lot lines, but because it was platted in 18, whatever.
Okay. I couldn't remember, I mean, it's always sort of been one property, I mean, but realizing that there were probably more lots than just the one.
We have photographs of the historic houses that were there that were torn down in, during urban renewal in the 60s, and each one had a large house similar to 714, the Bonner House, if not larger.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm not questioning design, I just, you know, because of the context of the rest of the neighborhood.
It can get a little confusing because sometimes when you have multiple lots, they're actually deeded together, and they've been deeded together for decades potentially, and so everyone gets to thinking of them as one lot, but in reality, they may be legally multiple lots.
And I think we always sort of knew that, but, I mean, we didn't see it. Yeah, okay. But there is, I mean, we do have some opposition from the neighborhood on, didn't you send us two letters?
I didn't see any on this property, but...
We definitely did for 1618, but I don't recall any for this one.
Okay. I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you had sent us some today. Okay.
I haven't.
Didn't come to me.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval based on staff recommendations for 716 and 720 Russell Street.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 913 Lawrence Avenue.
913 Lawrence is a circa 1950 cinder block house that does not contribute to the historic character of the Waverly Belmont Conservation Zoning Overlay. MHCC staff issued an administrative permit for the demolition of the house in this, in July of this year. The lot at 913 Lawrence is unusually wide at 80 feet. This application is to construct an infill and two accessory structures on the lot. One outbuilding will be a detached accessory dwelling unit with an attached covered carport located at the rear of the house. The dadu will have a footprint of approximately 990 square feet, which does include the carport, and which staff finds to be appropriate because the lot is over 10,000 square feet. The second accessory structure is a covered largely unenclosed patio area to the left of the house. This structure will have a footprint of approximately 336 square feet. The dadu ordinance states, quote, "No accessory structure shall exceed 200 square feet when there is a detached accessory dwelling unit on the lot," unquote. Staff therefore recommends that the covered patio be reduced to be no more than 200 square feet in order to meet the design guidelines and the dadu ordinance. As designed, the 336 square foot accessory structure does not meet the dadu ordinance. The proposed house is one and a half stories with a minimum height of 27 feet 6 inches from grade. Staff finds that this meets the historic context where the houses are largely one and one and a half stories with maximum heights ranging from 19 to 30 feet. Staff finds that the infill's height, scale, fenestration pattern, known materials, roof form, and setbacks all meet the design guidelines. Here are the side facades. The drawings do not show a change in material from the foundation line to the wall above. The design guidelines state that foundation line should be visually distinct from predominant exterior wall material. This is typically accomplished with a change in material. Staff recommends that a foundation material be different, that the foundation material be different than the brick wall of the infill. Appropriate foundation materials could be stone, stucco, or split-faced concrete block. Here's the rear of the infill and the rear of the covered patio, which you can see here is partially enclosed. And here are the drawings for the dadu. The dadu's height, footprint, location, dormer, setbacks, and overall design meet the design guidelines and the dadu ordinance, that is, if the other accessory structure is reduced to be no more than 200 square feet. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with the following conditions: that the finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses, that there be a change in materials at the foundation line to delineate the foundation from the wall above, the lap siding be smooth, a maximum reveal of 5 inches, staff approve a brick sample, all windows or doors, the roof color and texture, and the material of the side porch floor and steps, that the covered patio and accessory structure have a footprint no larger than 200 square feet, and finally, that staff receive a copy of the restrictive covenant for the dadu. With these conditions, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines for Waverly Belmont.
Thanks, Melissa. Any questions for staff? Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address? The applicant here? Okay. Applicant's not here. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Closed public hearing. Do we have any discussion or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval with staff recommendations for 913 Lawrence Avenue.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
1209 Paris Avenue is a circa 1980, 1918, sorry, big difference, two-story historic house that contributes to the historic character of the Belmont Hills Borough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. In 2013, MHCC issued a preservation permit for a rear addition to the house. The application before you today is for a dadu. The design guidelines state that there should be a minimum of 20 feet in between the back of a house and an outbuilding. The applicant is proposing a dadu that is situated less than 20 feet from the back of the primary structure. The dadu footprint is designed so that there is little overlap with the footprint of the back of the house, and that that overlap is kept to a minimum. At the point where the dadu and the footprint, the dadu footprint and the footprint of the house overlap, there's a distance of approximately 18 feet between the two structures. But because of the L-shaped form of the dadu, visually, it'll look like the dadu is closer to the house and closer to, I think, seven to 10 feet from the back of the house. Staff does find that the proposed location of the dadu and the distance between the dadu and the back of the primary structure to be appropriate, in this instance, for three reasons. The first reason is that the lot is unusually shallow. It's 130 feet, 130 feet deep. A typical lot in this neighborhood is 150 feet deep, so again, it's about 20 feet shallower than typical lot. The second is that there is a sewer easement at the back of the lot, and that is preventing them from pushing that back to the three-foot setback, which we would typically allow would be three feet, but they're pushing it, it has to be pushed up further to about seven feet, so they're losing about four feet from the rear setback. And then finally, the house on the lot is about 13 feet, let me just check that, yes, about, it's, the historic house is about 13 feet back from most of the other houses, so it has a deeper front setback. So again, if it was pushed up further to match the line of the other houses on the street, there would be no problem in getting the 20 feet between the back of the house and the dadu. So here's the design for, for the, for the dadu. The height, scale, materials, roof form, and setbacks all meet the design guidelines and the dadu ordinance. The only reason why it's before you today is because of the, it's situated less than 20 feet from the back of the house. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval with the condition that we receive a copy of the restrictive covenant, and that we, that we review the shingle color and texture and the door material and design prior to purchase and installation. And I believe the applicant is here, if you have questions for her.
Okay. Any questions for staff? All right. Thanks, Melissa, again. Would the applicant like to come forward and please state, state the case?
Hi, I'm Caitlin Smouse. My number, or my number, my address is 912 Bailey Street. I'm the architect for this project. We really worked to try to fit it on this lot in a way that, you know, brought it back away from the house, but also respected the sewer easement. Also, that back square is a screened porch. It's a one-story screened porch, so trying to keep it away from the main, main mass of the addition. But I'm here if you have any questions. Thanks.
Okay. Any questions before she leaves? Okay. Thank you very much. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing non-closed public hearing. Any discussion? Motion?
Yeah, I want to reiterate what the staff pointed out is that with sewer easement, all the factors sort of taken into account here, there would, I guess, if you took 20 feet, you'd have no dadu, and so that, that sort of puts an undue burden on this applicant, not that we're often want to go against the, you know, the hard written rules for, particularly for datus, the fact that, you know, it is a historic home, it was placed further back from the street in combination with a sewer easement. This one seems to be a reasonable, reasonable hardship, or certainly reasonable site constraints that would warrant going against those guidelines.
Okay. Any more comments? Motion?
I move approval with the staff's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Okay. Motion carries. Robin, I want to make sure, you did get the last one, that was 913 Lawrence, that we, the motion was, he thought he may have called out the wrong name for it, but...
If you did, I didn't catch it. So, thank you. Yes, it's a motion for 913 Lawrence to, to follow the staff report.
All right. Thank you. Okay.
This is an application for a new outbuilding in the Belmont Hills Borough District. It does include dwelling space on the second story of the outbuilding, but due to the base zoning of RM20, staff reviewed this as an outbuilding and not as a detached accessory dwelling unit. This is a contemporary form with a flat roof and a partial second story. Its overall height will be 23 feet and 3 inches from grade, which is subordinate to that of the house at 30 feet in height. Some of the materials are not called out on the drawings, therefore, staff recommends having approval of those, in particular, the cladding, windows, doors, the steps, and the materials for the planter box. The setbacks are six feet and five feet from the left and right sides, respectively, 10 feet from the rear. The site plan does indicate an exterior stairway, which would not be permitted by Section 1 of the guidelines. Therefore, staff's recommendation is that that stairwell be enclosed, and the applicant has informed us that that is agreeable. Therefore, staff finds that the proposed outbuilding meets Section 2BII of the design guidelines and recommends approval with the conditions of material approval listed and that the stairs shall be enclosed. You have received a letter of public comment from a neighbor on this project as well. You have received a letter of public comment from a neighbor on this project as well.
Any questions for Paul? Oh, go ahead.
This is really more for the record, because I think I've seen this in the past, where contemporary design, you know, and the details of that being pretty particular to style and proportion and rhythm and opening, rhythm of openings, and this one's absent corner boards, which certainly is contemporary interpretation, but I've seen scenarios where suddenly this becomes not a rain screen, and, you know, you've got what amounts to contemporary form with traditional details, and it gets a little muddy. Is, did people typically come back to you for those kinds of changes or not?
I think included in our approval of materials, sir, that we would review details like that as well.
I would hope that they would come back to you. I think that would certainly...
Yes, sir.
...change, potentially change what's going on with window trims and a contemporary aesthetic.
I actually, I'm okay with, really, that the outbuilding has such a different character, but, and was the reason why there was no question about it, because I did notice that maybe some of the other outbuildings are, I'll just say more modern, but maybe not as modern, but was that part of the thinking? A lot of times, outbuilding has some characteristics of the...
There are similar contemporary designs nearby.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I just wanted to, was that kind of more of just the rhythm you were seeing in the neighborhood, or, I mean...
Yes, sir.
Rhythm, sorry.
Paul, could you tell me more about why we didn't review as a dadu?
The base zoning here, Commissioner, is RM20, so it's not technically a detached accessory dwelling unit. The lot is permitted, I think, four units. Is that right? Let's see. So it's not a dadu as much as it is just a second unit on the lot.
So they have that by right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, thanks, Paul. Would the applicant like to come forward? Is the applicant here? No?
He's here. I don't think he has anything to add, sir.
Okay, applicant has nothing to add for the record. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing closed public hearing. Any more discussion or motion?
Recommendation for 2204 Belmont Boulevard.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. 1306 Beechwood Boulevard, and I just remind staff, this is the one that Councilman Allen spoke about in the beginning of the meeting.
This, it's an application, well, I'll start before the application. This is an outbuilding, shown here in the photograph, that was approved by the commission in 2014 and completed sometime in 2015.
Sean, could you speak just a little louder, please?
Yeah, certainly. Sorry. This building exists. It was constructed in 2015. It was approved by the commission as an outbuilding, shown as garage with loft, but not proposed as a dadu. During construction, the codes department found that it was being constructed as a dadu with an unpermitted dwelling and more living space than is permitted under the dadu zoning ordinance. Some of the zoning, there are requirements for datus that pertain to design, but also some about zoning, things apart from the design, like ownership must be owner-occupied, the lot must be eligible to have a duplex or to allow the second unit. So some of the issues with this building didn't meet those things that are not the purview of the Historic Zoning Commission, and some things maybe did. So the, as a council member mentioned, the owner is working with the zoning department or codes department to rectify things that don't meet aspects of zoning aside from the design. And in determining whether or not this meets the rest of the language for the zoning or for the dadu ordinance, they've asked us, or the applicant has asked us, to determine whether or not the building meets the design standards for an outbuilding. And as it was approved, although it was not reviewed as a dadu, staff found that the eve height, the roof height, and the dormer proportions and setbacks of the dormers do meet the applicable sections of the zoning ordinance. And obviously, having approved it, staff and the commission found that this building meets the Belmont Hillsborough design guidelines as well. So staff recommends that the commission informed codes department that the outbuilding as constructed does meet the design standards for a detached accessory dwelling unit, and accepting that the outbuilding does not meet Section G7A, which is a zoning section that is not the purview of the Historic Zoning Commission.
So maybe just help us make sure we're clear to the board of what we're exactly reviewing on this one, then. Do you mind weighing in on that, Robin? Just make sure we're clear on that.
What you're reviewing is the design only, and as Mr. Alexander pointed out, not the fact that the living space doesn't meet the requirements. Codes is working with them on that, and I believe they're making some changes to meet that. But again, that's not what you need to look at. The only reason it's really before you today is because it's been a fairly controversial project, and I know that I've heard from three or four neighbors who are very concerned. So I promised them at that time, which was, I think, a year ago, that it would come back to the commission, so there would be an opportunity for a public hearing if they wish to speak. I think since then, maybe everything's been worked out based on what the council member said. But again, I did make that promise, so that's why it's before you today, even though it meets all of the design guidelines.
So does our approval give...
Your approval doesn't approve the use.
Yeah.
And that's always the case.
Okay.
Anytime someone comes to you for a dadu, or duplex, or whatever, they still do need to go to codes and get their building permit and potentially a use permit.
But we're not voting on recommending the commission, direction to staff to inform the codes?
Right. No recommendation to codes, just doesn't meet the design standards, and it does.
And that would give you what you'd need it to move on. Okay, so we're really kind of treating it as a regular case, basically?
Yes.
Okay.
And no, I think it's written in the written staff recommendation, but I'll just say for the record here, no permit will be issued because no exterior construction needs to be done, so maybe it'll just be a letter to codes or something saying that...
That we approved it. Okay.
So Robin, what you're saying is the 700-square-foot limitation is not within our purview in this particular case?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
And in this particular case, it's my understanding that they are working with codes on correcting that.
Okay, because that was specifically part of what the councilwoman had as a condition that was important to her, so.
Robin, pardon my tardiness. Could you, perhaps I could come over and read the record, just so I'm fully informed as to what transpired. As I was walking out, the councilperson was walking in, just so I don't miss that piece of that. Also, whilst I look at that, I think this may not be a popular opinion, or I'm going to muddy the waters further. I certainly don't want to be, this commission to be used as a permission to do something that, you know, to come back and ask forgiveness, or sort of weave your way through the process after the fact. And I think legally, were this presented in a way, perhaps were this presented in a way that it were only 700 square feet, it might look different. Would it look materially different? Perhaps not, but I would think, and I want to get the argument before we have a chance to hear it, that certainly any approval or letter or whatever that we give is contingent upon something that, I know technically we don't review, that's a zoning issue, it's outside of our purview, but the case would, may materially change if that were, if it were different, and we may need to come first in this case, but certainly wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to be complicit in something that probably shouldn't happen, I guess, is what I'm trying to say here.
And I think what Chairman Tibbs said is the key. You're not making a recommendation. So although they are doing this, these steps after the fact, it's not as if you are being used to help them correct a violation. You're not making a recommendation, you're simply saying, we approved it before, it met our design guidelines, we've reviewed it now against the ordinance, design requirements, exterior, and it does meet them. That's all you're saying. They may or may not get a use permit, that's, may not happen.
Thank you.
So does everybody understand that, just kind of going back to what I said in beginning? Okay. All right, would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address and your case?
Thank you, guys. I'm Michael Locker. I'm at 313 May Bell Lane. My mom, Linda, lives in the house. This has been my part-time job for a year, trying to figure this out, so I'm glad to be here today. Special thanks to Sean and Robin for all their help. We have already worked out, we did not end up here in an effort to be dishonest. We got bad advice from our architect initially, and that's how we ended up, and then it's been a very confusing process since. It's been a chicken and egg. The reason I'm here today is, is we went to, so we have already worked out a deal with Bill Herbert and the city attorney. We have to build a small wall upstairs for square footage that we didn't even deem to be legally, even to be counted because of the ceiling heights, but anyway, that's besides the point. We've agreed to build that wall to just section off that, to bring it within the square footage requirement. When we went to pull that permit after we worked out the deal with codes, they said we had to come back before you guys, so it's chicken and egg. We can't pull the permit to rectify the situation until we have this hearing. So Robin's been great to work with us. We're just looking forward to getting this all behind us. So I'm here to answer questions. I've got hundreds of emails between me and Bill Herbert and Berkeley Allen, and I'm a commercial developer by trade, and this has been the most complicated project I've ever worked on, so I'm just here to help my mother, because there's no way she could have navigated this. I barely could, and I do this for a living, so, but I'm happy to answer any questions. We're thankful for finally getting here, so.
Just a question for you. So since MHCC is not required to do a preservation permit, so you're aware of that, and codes is not requiring that preservation permit?
They have a preservation permit from before, for what's constructed right now. So they do have a preservation permit. They just won't receive a second one.
Got it. Okay, so a letter is sufficient for...
Or even just for us to sign off in the computer program, that all the department shares should be enough.
Good, thank you.
That's correct. We just need, next time we go to codes, we just need them to say that you guys have now signed off, and then they've told us they'll allow us to pull the permit to build a wall.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much.
Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay, seeing none, closed public hearing. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, it's a difficult situation. I share a lot of Commissioner Mosley's feelings about this. I think, I'd like to ask the staff and see if it would be appropriate for the motion to not grant approval for this, but that the motion give a statement that we have no issue with the design and that we find it to fall within, compliant within the design guidelines.
I think, I'll let Quan weigh in here, too, but your initial approval was for an outbuilding, and now it's a different request because it's a dadu, although physically, there's no changes that need to be made, so we may need a motion for this dadu request, if that makes sense.
That's correct.
We've talked a lot about datus lately.
I feel like I have a better understanding after the brief presentation about building the wall inside, and if it met it now, that is a very important but very technical issue of the inside enclosed finished space, which is not really part of us. I would feel comfortable, I don't, if it just spoke to the outside with a complete understanding now that whoever's going to measure the inside, or however they're going to determine that, whether it be through some drawings or whatever, that that would be for the zoning administrator to determine and make the case for that.
So it's, go ahead, Ben. It's kind of, just reviewing just the design part of it, that we've gotten the recommendation, but...
Well, I was just going to say, I do believe there is a restrictive covenant in place, so moving forward, there should not be any other concerns about, where they're getting their approval now, and then a couple weeks from now, they're all of a sudden going to change or go back to what they had previously. That would be the enforcement angle that the county has.
Really, the chicken and egg analogy is probably really close to this, but...
Commissioner Tibbs, I'll make a motion to approve the previously submitted and constructed outbuilding at 1306 Beechwood as meeting the design standards for the exterior of a dadu, not speaking to criteria G or any of the others with respect to square footage, as meeting the Belmont Hillsborough Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next one up is 1825 Fifth Avenue North.
1825 Fifth Avenue North. The application is for infill in Salem Town. The existing house on this lot, you can see here, was approved for demolition by the commission in June due to the condition. As seen here, the immediate historic context includes small one-story single-family houses with larger infill present nearby. There is only one example of a historic two-story home in Salem Town, but the design guidelines do allow for two-story forms because there's a large number of nonhistoric two-story houses throughout the district. So here you can see the streetscape. That first house there in the far right is our subject property, and then these down below are across the street. So while the height of the proposed duplex does fall just below the 35-foot maximum allowable height, it's 34.8, I believe, the infill has a two-and-a-half-story form with windows to the third level. In April, the commission found a proposal for a similar infill project, it was one block over at 825 Fourth Avenue North, was inappropriate due to the two-and-a-half-story form. That applicant was required to revise the design to a true two-story form. The proposed width of the infill is 28 feet at the front facade, and it expands to 40 feet further back. The width of the existing one-story house is 29 feet for the full depth of the house. The proposed width combined with a two-and-a-half-story form is not compatible with the historic context. Therefore, staff finds the project does not meet Section 3A and B for height and scale. Moving on to the roof form. The infill has a cross-gabled roof form with clip side and rear gables. The form of the roof is large enough to accommodate a large third level, which staff finds to be incompatible with the historic context. Staff finds the project doesn't meet Section 3E. Here on the left, we have the current proposal, while on the right, there are two examples of infill that have been approved on Fifth Avenue North. These examples reflect true one-and-a-half and two-story forms, and we find them to be more appropriate for the neighborhood. The proposal meets all the base zoning setback requirements. The site plan doesn't show the footprint of the buildings on either side, so staff can't evaluate the appropriateness of the proposed front setback. We find we need more information to evaluate compliance with Section 3C. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval for the proposed infill, finding it does not comply with the design guidelines. Section 3A for height, 3B for scale, 3E for roof shape, and more information is needed regarding Section 3C.
Okay, any more questions for Jenny?
The, in terms of scale, or Section 3B...
In terms of scale or Section 3B, is that related to... Is staff's objection to the project as proposed related to front facade issues or just coverage on the lot or lots of other items?
It's really a combination of a two-and-a-half-story form. That third level could really accommodate living space. I'm not saying that it is. It's just a very tall two-and-a-half-story, almost three-story. Then you've got the width, which is much larger than the historic properties. And yeah, so it's really a combination of the height, the width, and the form together.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Applicant like to come forward? State your name and address.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm John Root with Root Architects. This... I have to admit, the disapproval by staff is kind of surprising to me on this project because this is the same design that we submitted to you guys back in 2014 and 2015 at 1727 and 1729 Fourth Avenue, a block away. And staff recommended approval at that time. And this is a sister house to that house. Same design. I brought pictures that I could show you of those houses. And I brought some more pictures of the streetscape. The staff recommendation only showed one. I'd like to show you to the north of the property. There's some new infill construction that's two stories tall immediately to our north. And then I would like to show the new infill construction across the street that was recently constructed. So yeah, you guys already have that picture. So I just... The roof form, we tried to mitigate the scale by clipping all the gables on the sides and on the rear of the home. Again, we were proposing this one gable on the front in the attic space above the second floor as a way to kind of break up the scale a little bit. And the form of the house, as you probably see in the other designs that were built on Fourth Avenue, yeah, it's 40-foot wide, but the 40-foot width is set back off the front of the house significantly. And again, the porch kind of wraps around. Again, all measures to try to mitigate the perception of the scale of the home. So yeah, I just... I'll answer any questions you have. But I don't know that the context on Fifth Avenue here has changed dramatically from Fourth Avenue, where we previously got the same home approved twice. So there it is. Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah?
Yeah. I had a quick question, John. So in... And I'm looking at some of the exhibits. This proposal, you mentioned it as a sister house. It looks like the form of the roof even narrows from, and you may not, from this example that was previously approved, you kind of shortened it up on the front to make it less prominent. Is that correct? Okay. I just want to make sure I'm reading the drawings correctly.
That is correct.
Thanks.
We may have more questions, but for now, we'll call you back if we need to. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Seeing none, closed public hearing. Discussion?
On this one, I'm just... In my mind, was trying to run back through some of the houses. One stands out in particular at Fifth and Garfield, where they have the sewer in the front. We had this... We couldn't match the setback in that... The coverage of that house and just, you know, the size of it being a... It wasn't a... It didn't have quite the frontage of this one. It sort of was turning the corner, I guess, with the entrance. So maybe not compatible, but I'm trying to resolve issues of scale and being equitable in our analysis as a commission across the district. This one being... I don't know if it's... I think more permissive wouldn't be an overstatement of what the guidelines permitted and even when they were put into place. Not to necessarily contradict staff's findings on this one, as much two stories is allowed. And I think if that weren't specifically written into the guidelines, and that was quite a matter of discussion amongst Council Lady, well, I think when she put it forth, and some discussion amongst this commission when we did. So that's what I'm also trying to remember how we got here and what we've approved before so that there is an equitable application of the guidelines across the district.
Hesitating on these. After I saw the massing of it, I was wanting to study these a little bit more and some of the context.
And I mean, I'll further say, I don't disagree with staff's analysis that the front-facing gable gives it the appearance of greater height. I mean, that's not... I don't think that's in question. If the hipped edge of the gable went straight across, it certainly would have a different appearance than it does with the front-facing gable at the... Above the... In the attic or above the rack of the second floor. That's regardless of what might be approved or what might be appropriate for this site. That's not... I'm not calling that into question by any stretch, so. And I know we've... In the past, I guess further, we've certainly looked back at cases we've approved. And because we don't get it right every time, doesn't necessarily mean we don't reel it in. I'm not suggesting that, I guess, either. But I do want to make sure we are trying our best to be even-handedly applying the guidelines across all cases.
I'm trying to... I guess you obviously... The analysis of the existing was on both sides of the street. It's the height... Maybe just reflect on that about some of these other ones. Now, this is not... This is the house, the sister houses. So this is not... I guess these are the houses that pass the street. According to the applicant, I don't...
That looks correct, yes. And we had... Here we go. These are the historic properties across the street. So contextually, we would like you to look at how the infill fits in with the historic properties. This neighborhood does allow for two-story forms because when the overlay was put into place, there are already so many newer two-story buildings. Our concern is that we're losing the smaller context.
And I think I saw, too, that 35 feet was what was allowed.
That's correct. I would add to that, though. It's not just about the overall height, but it's about that form. And so if you look at both sort of the front elevation and the side elevations together, there's a whole nother level up there potentially. And so it's not the height so much, it's that overall form of two-and-a-half in a neighborhood that's all one and one-and-a-half. Granted, two stories is allowed, but we're worried we're kind of creeping into what really is becoming more of a three-story form. There's no doubt this architect is probably the best at hiding massing. Really good at that. But still concerned about that creep. And that's why, I think it was last month or the month before last, you had a similar type of situation and didn't allow for windows on the front on that third level. But with this one, I don't know that that's enough to deal with it. It's that overall roof massing. So it's not just the height. It's not really a formula, but that form.
And I wanted to add, it's not showing up well here, but in your plans, it does. There is a whole cross gable back there that is kind of disappearing in this visual for some reason. It's not just that front.
We showed the side elevation.
Yeah. The appearance at the third level is kind of...
It's the back. I don't know that we had the side, actually. You have it in your packet.
If they took the windows out of it, would that make a difference?
That's a question I don't think so.
I think it would need more than that.
Okay.
And I think here, the context is a little bit different because you do have the one-story contributing houses across the street. And although there have been... And I think this slide shows, you know, what's the historic properties across the street there. And so it is... You know, it's a difficult situation. There are other precedents in the same area, but this is a somewhat unique situation. I do think it would take more than just the windows.
And this is that elevation?
Yeah. Yeah. I brought it on the side. Yeah.
You know, John spoke to... About having approval on other streets. And we always are reminded that, you know, it's site-specific. So when we do have this context that, you know, there have houses that are one-story versus a two-story, or the other streets had higher elevations or whatever. So again, it's just really site-specific. I mean, you're very good at this, Mr. Root. So... But this particular instance, it's not reading as balanced.
To comment back to Cyril, I would like to point out that the streets... The houses across the street are a good seven to eight feet taller. And we're on the downhill side of this, too. So if you're looking at just the height of the home, I think that's... We should take into consideration the overall height from the street also. Thank you.
I have a question, I guess, for commissioners in terms of what's contextual and what's... It's not our job to design this for the applicant. I think the appearance of, and even some of the examples that are given... I want to understand what we're... What we may be asking the applicant to do. I'm looking at figures four and five on page 10 of the application, which, you know, I mean, essentially just have a hipped two-story, two-story form. I don't know if I'm reading the plans right, and not my job to solve it for the applicant. But I feel like this house could have that. That house has less adornment than this one does. And if that's the... If that's an appropriate solution, you know, so be it. I don't want to tell the applicant what he has to do, but I just want to make sure I understand what we're collectively saying and the direction we, you know, that would be appropriate, I guess, in the district, given the context, both immediate and within the entire district.
I'm with this one a little bit, too. It's... Without giving direction, but it does... I mean, it... I guess... So my discussion is, do you feel the... About the third, you know, the extra level? Maybe even the hip takes a little bit of away from me a little bit for that third level. It doesn't feel as out of place of sum that we've actually approved. Maybe that's it. Maybe that, but...
I'll say, my comments may be put in the cart before the air. I'm imagining this house in a front elevation with a hip, a front-facing hip without the gable. And then if you look at the east elevation as opposed to a side-facing cross gable, if that were also hip, does this house come more into compliance? Is that where... And I don't want to put words in the mouths of the staff. That's not what we're looking at here. But that, plan-wise, the house is no different in that respect. And I want to understand... Make sure I'm understanding, scale-wise, what we're asking... Or, you know, what's appropriate in this instance.
I mean, I would just say, again, just to come back to it, the neighborhood, the overlay says two-story forms. And this, to me, reads as taller than two-story. So that's what I just keep coming back to. Yes, it's within the height limits. You know, yes, it does look nice. It's a nice-looking home. But the neighborhood enacted two-story limit. And this just, to me, reads as taller than that. My comment.
So just to keep the conversation. So I think yours was the windows is what was helpful for you as getting the third level. I'm answered, you know, maybe if the roof was gabled back or getting into design. Do you have any other comments about what... Kind of the read of that, Cyril?
You know, I think it's something that if the applicant went back and worked with... And fortunately, Mr. Root's been a great one to work with us as we've had other situations with other houses. He does a great job of the architecture. So I think going back, working with staff, we'd be able to find out of this form one that would be more compatible with this specific situation and this specific street.
Well, and taking more in contact of the streetscape and how it fits in with that. I mean, even though it is... There's other houses in the neighborhood. They're not... There are none of those right along here. I think we need to take that into consideration as well in the preservation of the historic homes.
Okay. We're in our discussion. Any... Maybe we ought to just put out a motion, kind of see where we get with it? Or do you have any other... Maybe we ought to try that. I actually want to do one little thing, and it makes it... I feel like it makes it better. I'm open for you talking just so we can maybe kind of wrap it up a little bit.
Did I hear that the board would consider removing the gable and producing a hip form on the house as a means of approval? Is that what I heard, that suggestion earlier?
Well, I think kind of what I'm hearing that that would probably read... I'm looking at you, too, Ben. I've sketched it on my computer just a little bit, what it might look like. It would definitely decrease it, you know, that front space of it. I would say, you know, that would probably be a... That might be in the direction that would work.
I'm looking at figures four, really, in particular. And maybe it was inappropriate to presume what the staff would... You know, what direction the project might head given the recommendation of disapproval. But if that's offered up as a, you know, as a more appropriate... This house presents to the street even narrower than... I mean, there's not dimensions on that drawing, but it presents to the street narrow, and there's an L-shaped wraparound porch that is, I think, appropriate, given the other projects that have been approved in the neighborhood. There is a question then of the side cross gables that have... Actually, in the front elevation, they have clipped... It appears they have clipped gabled edges, but in the elevation... they have clipped, it appears they have clipped gabled edges, but in the elevation, they're showing full gables on the little side stair there, so I'm not, that one is, or maybe I'm just confused in looking at the...
Do you know what we're talking about there, John? It looks clipped on the...
On the front elevation.
On the front elevation.
Yeah, the gables are clipped, and then on the sides, it shows the full gable. For the east.
Is it really clipped on the, you see how in this elevation, they're clipped on the sides?
Yeah, the side.
Is that really how they are?
Yes.
Are we trying to mitigate, accepting the third level when we're, when the design standards from the area are two-story?
I think that, I mean, this, this house is an attic, it doesn't have a third level. It has windows to an attic. Could a third level be added there? I don't know, it depends on how it's constructed. I'm not sure that that, that's, that's a symptom, not, I mean, I see that more as symptomatic as an interpretation than something that we could say, well, it has a third story, so we can't approve it. I think speaking more towards issues of eve height and perceived, things like that, or lean more towards the guidelines as opposed to a maybe three, third story. I mean, I would guess this house is going to be a truss, it's not going to be stick-built, it'll be built with trusses, and you'll be lucky to run mechanical equipment up there, let alone, you know, wander around in an attic space, but that's, that has nothing to do neither here nor there, as far as what we can approve or no.
So, maybe if it's working with staff on the, how the roof is constructed.
As opposed to dancing around it, I guess, if you, if you run the eve lines for the gables at the attic elevation, which is, as dimensioned, is 21 feet around the house, that certainly gives it a different appearance and has a different scale to it. It doesn't have a different footprint, and the architectural plans, which we don't have, the plans of the house don't change, which is neither here nor there. I mean, that's, that's what we're here to review, is proportion, rhythm of openings and the height. The project is not that materially different, whether it has those things and comes back a month from now, or we can decide on that right now. It's dangerous territory for me to even broach the subject, but in the interest of time and the applicant, is that acceptable? I think that might be what we consider a month from now, but I'd...
Well, and I think the other thing that we do, rather than try to redesign this at this point in time, you know, on almost all the projects that we have, it's subject to additional staff review of materials, elevation, that kind of thing. So, I think that we could actually take those elements that were part of the denial and make those subject to the applicant working with staff, to staff satisfaction. I think it's clear from all of us that we don't want this to look like a three-story house, that we want it to be more compatible with the scale of the street, which was the staff recommendation.
Anybody want to try to craft that into a motion for John?
So, I would recommend that with respect to 1825 Fifth Avenue North, I would move that we approve the project, subject to staff review of the front elevation and other elements of this house, to bring it into compliance with Section 3A, B, and E of the Salem Town Overlay Design Guidelines. And that additional information be provided as per the staff recommendation.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, to give maybe some additional direction to staff, as we don't want to dump our responsibility on them, I might, or I'll propose the amendment that a front-facing hip roof, front and side-facing hip roofs would, I think, go towards addressing the scale issues of a perceived additional story within the attic space, as perhaps a solution that would fit our direction the project might go in to, you know, be acceptable in terms of context of the neighborhood, based on the immediate context and the guidelines themselves.
Just restate the first part of that, that we, so that we can get that amendment about...
Sure, that the hipped, hipped, front-facing and side-facing roof form would be perceived, really pursuant to figure five, I think, in, within the guidelines, more in keeping with something that's appropriate.
Do you guys understand that proposed amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, okay, second. I was saying, do we have approval of the proposed amendment? I mean, all in favor of the proposed amendment, say aye. I got all those, okay. So, now we're back to the original motion with the approved proposed amendment. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, I think I've gotten lost. 208 Broadway.
This one may be, you may remember, I use the back of the buildings just because it's the easiest to see the side elevation, but this is on Lower Broadway, it's where Mike's Ice Cream used to be, and so you may remember that you approved cutting some windows and doors into that side elevation for a very modest rooftop addition. At the time, there was, they were going to remove the interior wall between these two buildings, which is a load-bearing wall between two buildings, and we were really concerned about that causing some integrity issues. So, although we don't usually review interiors, the design guidelines do allow you to look at interior changes that are going to affect the outside. And because we were concerned that might cause all the buildings to fall down, they submitted an engineer report stating that everything they wanted could be accomplished in a way that kept the buildings intact. But now they're coming back to you and asking to take down that side elevation above that lower building and reconstruct it, because they find that it can't be constructed as they originally had planned. We're recommending approval. Honestly, we have great concerns about this type of thing, and this kind of change for these historic buildings. But the shorter building used to be taller, so that was an interior wall, and for that reason, we're recommending approval. Any questions?
I don't know if this is a question after, this might be part of the discussion, so never. Go ahead. I'm trying to find where, I looked really into this, this morning. Of course, I can't find it. But in the thing they said that they were going to, the motion, or the staff recommendation was that, good night, that you accept it, you know, but that they put back the original brick that they tear off, right?
Right.
Well, in the contractor's language, they say specifically that they're going to stucco, just back over it. So, my question, number one, is, if that's the case, it's just going to be a new stucco side. So, what's the point, A, of even using the original brick? It's just going to look like stucco? I have a problem with that. And number two, according to the engineer report, you know, it should have been able to have been done, and not to say anything about the contractor, but I looked into it, and they do a lot of Krogers and small developments, and honestly, I think they're in over their head on this project, which worries me. I feel like there's some way to shore, there are ways, again, you'd have to get a new engineer report, the one was dated from 2016 that we got from the original structure. I would just like to know if that's even been looked into, a new engineering report. EMC is great. You know, there are ways, and it has been done, we've done it a lot in Lower Broadway, of, you know, shoring the building externally, I mean, not externally, but you shore it from the bottom up through the building to hold it in place. And again, I'm not saying that that is definitely the best thing to do, but I just don't know if that's even been looked at as a possible solution, just because I'm worried that it's just going to be a new stucco side, that will just not look like anything on Lower Broadway, and it's pretty prominent.
As far as I know, we haven't received anything, so I think that's a great point.
Well, maybe, is the applicant here? Maybe the applicant can come forward and we can talk through some of that. Thanks, Robin.
My name is Reggie Parsons, I'm the project manager for the general contractor and representing the owner. We did have a, well, first of all, as you can see on that picture, probably stucco was probably the wrong word, we should have, should not have used, it's a plaster coating existing on top of that brick right now. So, you, so basically, it's, the brick's always been hidden from the rooftop up. We did have a shoring engineer go out and look at it, had two different companies come and look at it, and we spent a great deal of time. We actually had all the owners, and the architect, structural engineer was there, the shoring engineer was there. That wall is built very, it's three bricks wide, the different width of the wall can go from two foot six all the way up to one, all the way down to one foot six. There's a lot of cracks in it. When they, when we went into the demo, we took some, we took what we could off the wall to be able to look into it, and it's just not good. It's very unsafe, as far as I'm concerned, to go in there, because you're actually taking 76% of that wall out, you're removing it, and that's from, it's not just from the ground floor up through the second floor, it's the basement, and that's a continuous wall all the way up 40 feet. When you go in and you try to hold that wall in the upper 26% in place, well, you remove the bottom 76%, or 74%, it's very difficult to do. And to do it in a safe manner where nobody, you know, that we don't have issues, so nobody gets hurt. The shoring contractors did not feel that it would be the wise thing to do, and they didn't. And even, they said even when they started doing it, you may have issues, and you may wind up having to take it down anyway. The cost to go through all of that would also be very expensive to do. Our idea was to go in and remove that wall, put it back structurally sound, and if it was, if it was important to the commission to put that same brick back up, then we would do that. Now, I agree with what she said, if we're going to go in there and put a plaster coating on it like it has right now, then, you know, is that, is that really a value to use that same brick? We certainly don't mind doing it, because we'll have, we'll have plenty of it to use. But that would be your choice, whether you wanted that to go back.
So, while you're thinking, maybe, Caitlin, I guess the concern I have is just kind of based on, you had an original engineer that said it would work, and I assume they looked at it, and I think, did you say we had a report before? So, that that engineer, what changed?
Yeah, I think it would. I think what they saw, what they didn't see when they looked at it the first time, I don't think they could really tell how that wall was built, and I think they felt like it would be something you could easily do. You know, in our business, it comes down to means and methods, and so we don't just, we bring in the appropriate people that's going to do the work and give us recommendations, and whether that's going to be feasible, whether that will apply, and in this case, two different companies said I wouldn't do it.
And I understand that.
So, that's why we did it.
Apparently, Robin had brought that concern up during it, but it's just, when we review something before, you know, you say, oh, we can save that wall, and here's an engineer report that says we can save it, and then after you build it, you come back and say, oh, we really couldn't, you know, I don't know. You know, it just kind of like, doesn't really sit super well with us when that happens, you know? It'd be, it'd be, you know, it's like, well, especially since staff was, you know, hey, are you sure this can work? Oh, yeah, and then now I can't. So, I, it kind of like what happened before, you know, so that's why, I don't know about the struggle, maybe frustration may be a little bit better word for it, but I understand, you know, the, I can follow that train and understand why that may be the line of thinking now, but just question about before.
I don't want to put words in the applicant's mouth, but sometimes, you know, destructive demolition at the outset of a project is not the best scenario, given that the project is contemplated and, but yet funded, yet approved, you know, all those things, and perhaps now that there is a better understanding of the structural condition of the wall that's not...
Well, that's evident. I mean, that's evident, I mean, that's evident.
It's real, that's not, that's not an endorsement of what's proposed here by any stretch, but I'm, I too, struggle with these, because, you know, on the one hand, Broadway as a district, and Second Avenue also is a district, we're charged with protecting the asset, but it's also, you know, it's a commercial-going concern for the city and something that attracts a lot of folks, so we're, I guess it's unwritten that we're balancing those things, but I do find it difficult, not for the specifics of this case, because we've looked at other cases where, you know, we're taking out multiple levels and hanging cars on the wall, and then we're asking somebody to do something on the side, as well, I can't do that, really? I mean, it does get to be, it does beg the question of, man, you're doing a lot of doings to, you know, to almost cause some of these things, I guess.
Yeah, and a lot of times, too, you know, we'll get, we're going to try to do it, and we're going to work to save it, and we're going to figure out, but when we get an engineer report that says it, and then we, it doesn't, just, just struggle with that. I understand, I mean, I'm an architect, so I've, we've definitely gone into places that it looked different once we peeled the wall back.
Can I add one other thing? The construction of this wall, the brick on both sides of that wall, you could tell that they used different-sized bricks, so there's no consistent mortar joint across there at all. So, coming in there and doing a line to be able to beef it up underneath, that's going to be problematic in itself. What they did in between that brick was just, they just threw stuff in there, it was not uniform. I mean, it's just, if you were to look into it and see it, you would, you would probably wonder, I'd be scared to try to support it, because I just don't know what's going to happen, and that alone is a huge safety situation there that really bothers us, and we just don't think that, and it's going to cost us more money to do it this way than the other way, to be honest with you.
Well, we can relate, I mean, we understand that, just, like I said, we just...
Understand.
Do you have any other comments, Caitlin?
No, I mean, I would just, I guess, just want to know, just maybe work this, can't find the actual language of what Robin had written for her staff findings, just, you know, get what exactly is going to be put back on there, you know, get approval from staff? What's it going to look like? I mean, if it's a color, you know, I mean, yeah, just what exactly it's going to look like? I mean, if it, they say we're going to do the same thing again, it's like, well, you know, I mean, this, even though it's the current, even though it's plastered over now, it has its own historic plaster look, you know, and then it's going to be just brand-new plaster look, but, you know, so just, you know, what exactly is going to be put back on there and how, I think, is the issue?
Well, I have the same question as, what is, what would be the Secretary of Interior Standards in a historic district for, it's going to, my guess is that you would use the similar technique as what was originally done, not the deteriorated technique of years of wear. It's not to make it look like it does now and sort of create a false history with it, that you're accepting this, this has to be reconstructed, and it was put up in a way that would be compatible and/or within, in keeping. It's not the first time something like this, I think, has happened, I want to understand that, I guess, in terms of what direction we'd be giving the applicant.
I think it could probably, in this case, go either direction, because it isn't a new feature, it's reconstructed, but it isn't a brand-new feature, so the Secretary of Interior Standards have different treatment methods, and so that would meet to, so they could either make it look old like it is now, or they could do a new plaster, either one would be correct. I would, will say, though, that it, not to beat up about it, but it's a little frustrating because your description of the wall, that is how those buildings were built.
I know.
That's, so I'm curious as to why this wasn't known at the time. They did use different-sized bricks, they are three bricks thick, they do get thinner. That is how they were constructed.
I mean, we're kind of backed into a corner. I mean, we're, we're kind of backed into a corner. It's going to happen. I don't like it. I don't. But John Rich is going to get his, you know, it's going to happen. I mean, it's already under construction. I mean, you know, and I'm not trying to take away from, you know, yes, Broadway is a commercial district. It's just, you know, kind of unfortunate that exactly what Commissioner Tibb said and then what Robin just echoed is just kind of a little bit frustrating sometimes. But these things do happen. I understand. I work at a contractor. It's, it's, it's just sometimes hard when I know it's just going to look, you know, it's going to be a new plaster wall. It's what it's going to look like. It's what it is. It is what it is.
We can make that wall look as distressed as you want it. I've done a lot of this stuff, and I know that it can, we can make it look just like that if you want it to make it look like that.
Well, and to that point, I think it would be important in this. Generally, our language says that the staff would review materials and that kind of thing. I do think that in this particular situation, it would be appropriate for a sample of that wall to be constructed at least, you know, four by four, four by eight feet, so that then the staff could review that and approve that versus just submitted samples and materials and things like that.
And we can do a mock-up of three or four different versions, so you can look at it and see. I mean, that's, that's easy. Now, we expected to do that anyway. So.
That's good. We, and we're sensitive to Broadway because we are, it's in jeopardy of losing some of its designations because of so much going on. So, but that was a great motion. Why don't you craft it to one?
With respect to 208 Broadway move that we adopt the staff recommendation and that the materials and mock-up wall be constructed for staff approval prior to construction of the entire wall.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
All opposed.
Motion carries. 3926 Cambridge Avenue. Is everybody okay to commissioners? Are no, everybody good? No restroom breaks? Okay. You're good? Okay. Okay.
3926 Cambridge Avenue is a circa 1920 one and a half story bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Cherokee Park Conservation Overlay. The application is to construct an addition that is both taller and wider than the historic house. The addition involves a three foot seven inch ridge raise. The application is also to construct an outbuilding. The outbuilding will not contain a dwelling unit. Sorry, I've been sitting for so long. The proposed addition is wider than the historic house but meets all base zoning requirements. It's a footprint, it has a footprint of 969 square feet. I'm sorry, that's the proposed outbuilding. So the addition meets the setbacks, but is wider than the house. The proposed outbuilding is 969 square feet, which is appropriate because a lot is over 16,000 square feet. However, base zoning requires that outbuildings with footprints larger than 700 square feet be three, five feet from the side property line, and this one is just three feet from the property line. So staff finds that it doesn't meet the design guidelines in terms of its side setback. Here's the front facade. The proposed addition includes a ridge raise. The ridge raises will be inset two feet from the sidewalls of the historic house, which does meet the design guidelines. However, it will increase the roof by three feet seven inches vertically. The design guidelines state that the quote "purpose of a ridge raise is to allow for conditioned space in the attic and to discourage large rear or side additions." The raised portion must sit in a minimum of two feet from each of the sidewall and can be raised no more than two feet of vertical height within the same plane as in the front, as the front roof slope. So the design guidelines do not allow for ridge raises that increase the height of roof more than two feet. And again, this one is proposed at three feet seven inches. In addition, the ridge raise is problematic because it does not serve to discourage a larger rear and side addition. Ridge raises greater than two feet have not been approved for historic buildings in the past. The rear addition will be both taller and wider. An addition that is wider than the historic house could be appropriate in this instance because the lot is wide at 60 feet and because the house is relatively narrow, just 29 feet. However, the design guidelines state that addition may raise, rise above or extend wider than the existing building. However, generally, the addition should not be both higher and extend wider. Staff finds the proportion of the addition that is eight feet wider than the historic house and three feet seven inches taller to be inappropriate. This proportion, this portion of the addition includes a wall dormer, which also does not meet the design guidelines, as the design guidelines state that front-facing inside dormers should be set back a minimum of two feet from the wall below. So staff finds that the addition's height and scale do not meet the design guidelines because the ridge raise is taller than what has been approved in the past. The addition is both taller and wider and because the addition includes a front-facing wall dormer. Here are the side facades. The footprint of the addition will more than double the footprint of the historic house. Staff finds that the slightly larger footprint could be appropriate in this instance since the house is relatively small in scale and is on a lot that is 16,000 square feet, which is fairly large, particularly even for this neighborhood. However, the combined effect of the large footprint and the additional height and width of the addition create an addition that is out of scale for the historic house. And here are the additions, the elevations for the outbuilding. The outbuilding does not contain a dwelling unit, so it will be a dadu. The dormers on the outbuilding do not set back two feet from the wall below, as is typically required. And also, as mentioned earlier, the outbuilding should be set five feet from the side property line versus the three feet which is proposed. And for these reasons, staff finds that it does not meet the design guidelines. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval, I'm sorry, these are just some other illustrations of the addition with, combined with the outbuilding. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of this project, finding that the addition's height, scale, and roof form do not meet the design guidelines, and that the outbuilding's side setback and dormers do not meet the design guidelines. Staff finds that the project does not meet sections 2B1 and 2B2 of the Cherokee Park Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines. The applicant is here and I believe would like to speak with him.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward and state your name and address?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Van Pond. I am at 2929 Sidco Drive, and I'm the architect for this project. I do have a handout. I only have five copies, but it's, this handout is the adjacent property that this commission approved an addition to in 2009, 2010. It has some similarities in, in situation. A couple of things to be clear on about this addition. The owner's here with me today. These properties, even though the, the scale of the lot is 16,000 square feet, if you look on the site plan that was submitted in your package, there is a 20-foot wide sewer easement that basically divides the property in half. That presents some challenges to doing a single-story, low-scale addition to the, to a, to a house on this lot. If we had that opportunity and could go back and back and back, we probably would have looked at that as an option. As it sits with that hindrance, we have to stop our addition at that point. As in, as is in your staff recommendation, this additional area is about 1,485 square feet of footprint added to the existing house. The existing house is just over 1,000 square feet in footprint with about 220, 230 square feet of front porch. Our addition heated footprint is 1,013 square feet. The porches to the side and the rear add another 485 square feet. Those porches are single-story. They do match the eve height of the existing front porch, which is fairly low. And it's part of the, part of what the strategy was with this project was to, again, cascade the massing down, knowing that it is a substantial addition. A few comments on staff recommendations. We are, we got the staff recommendation last Thursday, so some of these things, even in discussions with Melissa Baldock, who was the staff lead on this, some things we didn't have in front of us until we got the exact recommendation. So I would like to capitulate a few things to start with. We are perfectly happy to move the outbuilding to five feet away from the side yard setback. That's fine. We are perfectly happy to reduce the dormers on the outbuilding back to two feet. As is stated, I think, appropriate, I think is what the word was. I don't think it's, anyway. We're perfectly happy to do those things. In submitting this, we worked back and forth with staff several times. And this, what you have in front of you that staff has reviewed is the second iteration that was much reduced from the first iteration. Quickly, but much reduced from the first iteration. We did take the staff's comments to heart about that. One of the reasons we requested three foot seven inch ridge raise was to give us the ability to have basically shingled roofs across the whole house. From a long-term durability standpoint, that makes a lot of sense to me as an architect. However, we do understand that the two-foot ridge raise is what it is we wanted to ask, and this was the way we could ask. We are, for the ridge raise, we are perfectly happy to reduce that to two feet. It would change the character of the bridging roof between the gable mass at the front and the rear of the house to that of a more flat, low-slope roof. We're okay with that. That would still give us an additional couple of feet in height above the ridge of the current house, which the ridge of the current house is six feet six inches above the top of the joists on the, on the second floor attic of the existing house. The reed on the eve heights of the, most of the addition, with the exception of the porches, is higher than that of the porch eaves and the kind of dependency eve at the rear of the house. The house does have a nine foot 10 inch ceiling height throughout the first floor. We do want to maintain that, to maintain consistency if at all possible. As I said, we would perfectly capitulate to lowering the ridge rates to two feet. We would like to keep the cross gable portion of the addition at the higher ridge height, which would be a three foot seven inch ridge raise from the existing ridge height, which is why I brought the illustration example of the house next door, which had a 2,000 square foot footprint addition to it. It is larger to the side and to the rear, obviously, and it is four feet taller than the existing house at its maximum peak. I wanted to give you that as a contextual piece. It also had to deal with the same sewer across the middle of the yard. This whole side of Cambridge Avenue has a sewer easement across it. And there are, even though the surveys do say it is a non-deeded easement, there are manholes across everyone's yards, so we pretty much think it's there. We'd like to offer those considerations. We have heard what staff has said. We are concerned about making the house appropriately massed to the neighborhood. We are, we do have some issues that we run into with this sewer easement happening at the rear of the property. And we'd certainly appreciate some direction from the commission based on those. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I guess, I will say, just being consistent with the last time a similar case came up with me, I don't know if it works for you. Obviously, you have a lot of, since you received the comments, you have a lot of potential changes. I don't know if deferment is something to be worthwhile for you. You know, we can definitely talk about it if that, because you did mention they wanted to hear our, our comments, but I would.
We would appreciate the comments of commission because this is not an easy project. It's not a, it's not a simple solution that's available to anyone. So I appreciate, I appreciate that, but I think it would give everyone some direction. And as I said, the things that I had mentioned, we are perfectly happy to execute. And we actually did provide staff with a revised set of elevations with the ridge raise not so, not as high, but they weren't out in time for your submittal.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Van? All right. Thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Okay. Seeing non-closed public hearing? Yeah.
In reference to what he provided us on the, a one that had been built prior to that, I think I remember this discussion, the distance that the, the addition fell back on the original, I mean, the amount of ridge that was available and from the streetscape. I think that was the, the exception in that, in that, that discussion. I don't know whether anybody else remembers that or not, but, but I, I think I really do think we discussed this, but it, it wasn't as close. I mean, this, the one that we're looking at is, is just right on top of the ridge of the existing house where this one was not, is not. It's set definitely further back so that you don't really see that, that elevation. So anyway, that's addressing the exception that we made, I think, at that time.
It might be easier to kind of like before, to don't think about what Van said. Just keep trying to, that way we can focus on what we have and it might, although I appreciate it, your willingness to work, but if we try to remember, I think it's, gets kind of confusing.
These are things that staff suggested.
Okay, yeah. Maybe I'll start off with just about the question about the height difference in the back, the higher than the original historic home. Maybe we can start if there was any discussion amongst commissioners regarding that?
Yeah, I mean, oh, that was me, sorry. The immediate ridge raise, you know, is different than I guess, you know, I was, wasn't here when this next door property was approved. You know, the immediate ridge raise is, I think, very visible. And if, you know, it's a two-foot thing, then I think we need to stick to that. And the three seven is almost, you know, it's quite a bit more. So that just makes it, just, I mean, I, I agree with what staff found. It's just with, with the additional height, with the ridge raise and the coming out to the side, which they said could be appropriate, but you know, the, the both things together, I think it's just too, it's too much.
How about the footprint? Anybody, any comments about the footprint at all that, I guess I'm with staff, and I think even the applicant, that the footprint is not necessarily as bad within itself, just because, but I guess it's a combination of things. But I'm open to, want to hear what you guys say. Thoughts about it? Or anything else?
I think this type of project is one of the most challenging for the architect and for the owner in that you're dealing with a very small house to start with. And I think that staff's response to that is exactly appropriate in that it looks to me like the, once this was completed, the addition would overshadow the original house and being taller and wider. And I think that all the separating it might help out some. I think what you do wind up with then is making it look like there's a larger house behind the smaller house in front. So it's just an awful lot of project to put on this one lot and, and to, to go wider and taller. And, you know, it just seems to me that it is contrary to what the guidelines call for, which is to work, to be sensitive to the scale and proportions of the existing neighborhood.
This is not in disagreement with anything that's come before. I'm, I'm looking back and remembering back to the previous applica, approved application for the house next door that Van, I think, struggled mightily with that one as well. Some noted differences here? Because we did it next door, I'll, I'll add to the complexity or the level of difficulty is raised at this one. If you'll notice in the site plan that the front of the house, the front of the porch extends to the front of the house adjacent, not, so you're starting further back from the street, and you have an unmoving sewer easement in the back. And so that adds to level of difficulty, certainly. And I think, you know, these are things that aren't, that are owner and architect preferences. The addition of a screen porch that doesn't eclipse into, you know, that's a program element that, that probably adds then yet another level of difficulty to this project. That, you know, whether you agree or not, the previous approval extended a roof height and a form back a certain distance and then jumped up from and a form back a certain distance and then jumped up from there with a hipped roof that from the street, you kind of saw a shingle and it, I don't know, it certainly hadn't been pointed out to me, and I'm, I'm right out of college, live next door to the house that we, so two doors closer to Bowling. So I'm familiar with the neighborhood and the constraints of this site. That was many moons ago, but that we're adding yet more difficulty to a situation that makes even putting an addition on this house that much, that's more, that much more challenging. I think our solution previously was getting it far enough back. I've not driven by this one or known that there's been a tremendous amount of negative comment or, or that there was a tremendous amount of regret as to what, what was permitted in the house next door, perhaps the staff has heard differently. I only say that in, in that that one is, is taller and there was some, there was, there was some leeway given there. And so whatever we, whatever we come up with, probably ought to note that. And that this isn't just the house across the street that doesn't have a greater set, you know, that's not also dealing with the greater setback and an encumbrance that is essentially in the middle of the lot and splits it in two. I think I've restated the obvious for the architect and the applicant, but.
Sometimes you gotta do that. I guess along lines of, Ben, is there anything, any, for direction? Anything you say that, you know, based on that?
I think, you know, having the two-foot ridge rays adds, is in keeping with the guidelines. So, so then at that point, are you yielding at all to, in this case, given these constraints, how yielding would you be to a wider? You know, it appears, if not exactly, almost exactly, that the house is already meeting the plan west, you know, along the drive, that that's, it's flush there and that you're getting taller and wider. And that was specifically mentioned by the staff as, as kind of a, a no-no, in, in that you're not, you're not wanting it to, to do both of those things. I think the previous application got to a place where it, it pushed that far enough back in the way that roof was treated. It, it was deemed to be approvable at that time. This one's, is, pushes more of those elements more forward, so it, it makes it that, that much more difficult to, to deal with both the, the program elements that the applicant wants, but, but then also us as a commission trying to make sure we, we provide that balance. Because to me, there's, there certainly is a level of hardship here that oftentimes doesn't exist on other sites or that is more invented sometimes than, than, than this applicant has, is, is set with.
Following the staff's recommendation on that proportion is kind of some of the direction I guess we would go with then. I'm, I am leading the conversation, but just kind of, yeah, yeah. I think that was good, actually, but.
So Ben, are you saying due to the sewer easement and different things that they're dealing with on this specific site, that you're, you know, necessarily kind of okay with, with what they've done or what?
No, not necessarily as presented. I, I, I mentioned the word equitable previously. I, I think it would be, it would be, it would appear not, not equitable for, for the same consideration not to be given this property that was given the adjacent property in terms of meeting the guideline. There's, there's not, you know, that's not a black or white issue. I, I can't say, oh, it, it just moved out of gray and now it's absolutely.
That works.
Clear. That works, but I, more of a, I wouldn't say it's a caution, I just, something for us to keep in mind.
Although I went by this house earlier and looked at it, I didn't pay it that much attention to the house next door. I was looking primarily at this house. I just pulled it up on Google Earth, though, and, and it clearly is exactly the same situation. A very small house in front of a very large addition. And so to be consistent with what we did before, although I wasn't on the commission then, it would be inconsistent if we denied this based on the, based on that prior approval.
The face of the addition on the west side is not flush with the existing house. It is set two feet back, just as clarification.
Well, I mean, my, my memory, and from the drawings, I, I remember this, remember the, the house next door and certainly the context is, is familiar to me. I think part of the question is, oh, well, can you, can you, can you get, at what point do you, what's the best avenue to take to be permissive to, to an applicant that has, has some site constraints, but that is not permissive in every way that, that, you know, puts, puts an addition on the house that, that isn't compatible with the neighborhood? And so I think some things to consider would be, the ridge raise that sets in two feet certainly distinguishes the house as, to make an argument for what may be possible here, that's where I'm going with this. Having the ridge rays be two feet and, and set in as it normally would maintains the house, or at least the appearance of the house as it was originally constructed. It sort of checks the box in, in that regard. In, in the plan, and forgive me because my computer, when I scroll up to a drawing, it, it takes a minute or two to, to respond back, but in the plan, the house has a porch that steps in, and then for the house to then step back out flush along the driveway or the west side, we've, it's not appro, that's not generally appropriate, but certainly in this case where we've got a lot on the opposite side that, that we balance that and be able to allow it to come, come up flush. And that may not have, that may have just been the architect's choice, or I have a feeling he was trying to make sure that it was compliant in some ways and then where it needed to be maybe not compliant with all the wishes and desires of, of previous projects that he's put before us. That to me would, would lessen the impact of, of some other things about the project that if it were able to come back out flush on that side after giving way to a porch that very distinctly says, you know, this was the original form, there's now a porch here, and then this comes back out flush. I don't know that that's necessarily detrimental to the house or, or the historic appearance of, if this were removed, you can kind of tell what was originally there. And we, we take, certainly take that into account in establishing the guidelines and in making previous recommendations. So I would, that would be a point that would be worthy of some consideration in a new or unadjusted proposal.
Not to muddy anything too, but just kind of responding to Cyril. Although we do try to review each case separately, so we obviously want to learn from other cases that we've approved in the past or disapproved, but just, we, we want to, you know, I mean, we make an approval just based on this one, not necessarily because we approved it before or even if we had disapproved it before, we want to make sure we, just on this case. Not to muddy that, but just wanted to make that statement.
I'll, I'll put forth a motion.
There you go, man.
Just to get things off the square one.
Yes, thank you.
I make a motion to adopt staff recommendation on 3926 Cambridge Avenue.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay. 1703 Primrose Avenue.
1703 Primrose is an application to redetermine the rear setback for an outbuilding, a dadau, which has already been approved here. No changes proposed to the, the outbuilding itself. The commission approved this in March with a setback determination from 10 feet at the rear to five feet. Typically, outbuildings are located to the rear property line, but we're not regularly on the property line. So the commission has approved outbuildings with garage doors facing the rear as close as five feet, but not closer than, than that. There is, oh, I don't have a great image of it here, but there's a kind of unusual buffer area. Oakland, the side street sort of kinks around behind the, the place there, so there is a little buffer of, I think about eight or 10 feet behind it. Staff inquired of Metro Public Works for their review on this specific request, and they also do not support a structure being any closer than the, the five feet which is already approved. Therefore, staff finds that locating the outbuilding closer than what's been approved five feet on the property, rear property line would not meet Section 2B, eye of the design guidelines for location, and recommends disapproval of this application. And I believe the owner and/or representatives are here to, to discuss it.
More questions for staff? Okay, thanks, Paul.
Applicant like to state your name and address?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Ganem. I am the homeowner at 1703 Primrose Avenue, and this is my architect, Van.
Hello, Van. Greetings.
So I've got handouts, and they're actually kind of stacked, because I would sort of present that I think that there's a little bit more new information, because we got a survey done and, and my contractor gave it to me today. You can see that it's dated July 18th, and so I would just ask, right? And so I would just ask that you kind of take a look at it and then kind of consider the presentation while I'm sort of talking through it. So just a little bit of background, my name is Jennifer, grew up in Nashville, moved to 1703 Primrose Avenue about eight years ago. I live there with my husband and my six-year-old son and my three-year-old daughter. We love our house, we love our neighborhood, and we understand the importance of the overlay. And just as a philosophical matter, me and my husband would never request of the commission anything that we believe would compromise the rhythm of the existing buildings on our street, our safety, or the safety of any of our neighbors in our area, because we're so happy with where we are. But to that point, and considering that we do have that philosophy, and you guys have to kind of make the decision about compromising the existing, the rhythm of the existing buildings in our street, I would just ask that you first take a look at the survey. And you can see that the survey shows that we have this, so the existing lot 43, I guess I am, 44? So my existing lot, this one here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So my existing lot, you'll see that if you're looking at that piece of property sort of on its own, it, it does not necessarily give you the view that you sort of really need to consider. So if you flip to the bird's eye view and then the view showing the picture where you're looking down the street, and you'll kind of notice that to the back of our property line, the rear property line, we have this sort of no man's land, right? So the rhythm of this street in the alley, you'll see that there's about five feet between the new word that I learned today, which is a dadau.
Which one is?
Theirs is the blue one, just above the red fence.
Right there, just for everybody, so it's the blue.
Yes. This one is my house here? Right. And so if you look down the alley, the rhythm of the alley is showing that there's about five feet between the dadau and the edge of the existing pavement. So that's sort of the rhythm down the alley. I think that our property line is a little bit of an anomaly in that as you're coming down Oakland, and you'll see that the property owner to the west has a 10-foot gate in between, that extends out past my property line, the rear property line, to the edge of the alley. And it's about 10 and a half feet there, and that's how they kind of pull out and pull in, because their garage is actually located on the ground floor beneath the two stories. But to that point, because we have this sort of no man's land that you can see here, the edge of our pavement.
Is 10 feet.
Is 10 feet from the property line.
The property line is essentially the fence line.
Correct.
Property line here that you're seeing in the photograph is essentially the fence line and the low wall line, that is the property line.
And you have 10 feet of unimproved right of way is, is what, what's visible there.
So, but to the westerly, to the, I'm sorry, to the easterly side there, I'm one of two houses right there on the corner that's sort of right before the alley, but to that westerly property line, that's sort of a butt's out. So just to that point, so that you're not obstructing the current character of the street, I would argue that my street is those two houses right there, my house and the house to the east. So I would just want to, so as it concerns like that right of way in the alley, we've got about 11 feet there with the gate as, as far as backing out of my street is concerned or my, my backyard is concerned. And then the edge of the pavement is still eight, about 10 feet from my property line. All of that together, also considering the fact that the alleyway is a very low traffic street, you can't actually see it really, you can't see the entrance from the other side on, I believe it's Brightwood. And Oakland itself is a very, is a very low traffic street. So from our backyard, there's complete visibility to Oakland, and due to the edge of the pavement from the property to the east, there's also clearance and visibility to allow for that as well. Considering all of those things together, that's why we'd ask that you approve the dadau up to that concrete wall where you're seeing, which is where the fence would be. Thank you for your consideration.
Do you want to add anything to that, Van? Is there?
I think Jennifer said it very well. This is a really odd street configuration with the corner happening, an inside corner happening, transitioning to an alley that doesn't align with anything. And the gravel area you see in the street photograph has never been improved. It is right of way, Oakland is never going to get bigger. There's no danger of this becoming a major thoroughfare by anybody's estimation. And so that space between the edge of the paving and their property line essentially is 10 feet of backout space. That's what a standard garage facing an alley is required. We did get a reduction, we, we appreciated that. But in, in, they're looking at their kind of shallow lot, as you can see the lots dramatically get deeper, one lot beside them, they want to get as much yard space as they can. And given the kind of, as she, as she said, there's visibility from the garage doors, there's visibility for oncoming traffic, we would like to see this happen.
And the property to the east, just so I know that I've said it, there is a 10-foot line on the property, about 10 or 11 clearance from the gate with the property to the west. The property to the east, you can see there's a car parked there as well.
On your screen.
On your screen up there. That property is also sort of a no man's land because they've got gravel and pavement and sort of, it, it isn't a straight thoroughfare. There's definitely additional clearance there that's been there for the past eight years and that I would maintain is going to stay there for the next 20 or 30, or however long you guys say it can, which is why I'm glad you're here.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
This is a general question. I mean, if Rory, or Public Works says, he is Public Works, let's be honest, if Public Works says it's a no-go, is it a no-go? Or is it even something that we discuss, or do we set if it's?
You set the appropriate setbacks, but we were concerned about that, and they looked at that property very specifically. And we were just worried that it's sort of a misuse of that ability to set setbacks to allow something to be on the lot line. They looked at it. I don't know if it's because of sight lines, or traffic, trash pickup, or the way those two roads intersect. I don't know. But, they said they definitely would prefer that we not allow it on the lot line.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing and closed public hearing. Discussion?
I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem with it. I mean, you know, I haven't, I guess, been on the commission that long, but, and, you know, from what Public Works said, yes, that's, that's the one thing that, you know, really gives me pause, just because of, I mean, not in general, for everybody to start putting things on their lot lines, but just this very specific case. I mean...
Find me another one in Nashville that's like this.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you know, for these very specific circumstances, I think the owner, you know, really did a great job explaining. And just what I'm seeing on the photo, you know, I just don't have a big problem with it.
It's definitely something that's really, I guess it is so Nashville that it is, you find these little oddities. But, it's definitely a unique little, this is really a unique thing.
So, I couldn't figure out from the drawings that were submitted what this was like. So, I went out and I actually parked the car, and there is a, there is a survey stake there that's behind those trashcans between the, right up against that stone wall and the hedges. And, and I could see, I mean, I think the garage is sandwiched in tiny little backyard. There is a hardship here. And in looking at the traffic configuration there, the little bit of traffic that came by when I was there, I mean, I think it's justified. So, I think, I think actually moving it to the property line is justified. I think if we, if we stick with the prior setback, it means that it basically either crams that garage, you know, right up against the house. There's really not much room between there now. Seems to me a good design, a good solution for it. And in looking at it, I didn't see, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I didn't see a perceived threat with, with over 10 feet to be able to back out into the alley. We typically grant those. The effective alley, based on the photograph and what's on the survey, shows that, in essence, you've got 10 and 1/2 feet between what's the operative alley and the property line.
This is kind of asinine, but I'm going to say it anyways. Really, there is, there's no alley. This house has two frontages. And if we're looking for a way to be permissive, and we've approved zero, zero front setbacks on properties, in fact, it's encouraged to get up to the sidewalk. One could make an argument that we're not giving any quarter to a future applicant, that this is not a rear setback, this is in fact a front setback on Primrose Avenue, not on an alley. Again, like I said, I qualified it before I said it. If you want to find a legal way around, you know, doing, I shouldn't say that in the presence of a lawyer. A precedent. Not a legal way. I'll say interpretation of what is happening here. One could do that. And so, I, you know, that, that's just a contrarian way of looking. Well, not precedent, yeah. Of what the applicant is desiring to do here, which, on the surface, doesn't seem unreasonable, although admittedly is contrary to what our friends at Public Works would like for us to do.
Just a question to legal on that. So, they don't have precedents over us, over this commission?
If the commission makes a determination that that's what the setback is, then maybe there's a problem for them at some point, but you all have the authority to make a determination.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Caitlin, you started. You want to try, you want to try?
I'm a kid in class.
You want to try to make, you want to start the motion?
I don't want to do it.
Could I butt in for just a second?
He doesn't watch, he doesn't want to.
Could I butt in for just a second? Just because I'm concerned about setting the property owner up for something, because we don't know what the plan is for this street. That is public right of way, even though it's not used right now and it's not improved. That if you do feel like it's appropriate to at least set it back so that the overhang isn't over the property line, so that would be pushing that building back a little bit.
Thank you.
I think that's appropriate. So, with respect to 1703 Primrose Avenue, I move that we, that we approve the applicant's request with the condition that the entire structure not, not go beyond the property line, including any overhangs.
In foundations.
In foundations, yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. One opposition.
I think I'm not opposed to. I'm opposing.
Okay. Do you, let's, let's just do a, one more time then?
Hand vote?
Yeah, hand vote. Let's do a hand vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. I mean, yeah, raise your hand. All opposed? Okay. 1212, wait a minute, I guess I should finish that. Motion carries. 12-Tale McChesney Avenue? I'm getting.
1212 McChesney Avenue is in the Inglewood Place Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. It is a 100-foot wide lot by 206 feet deep. On the left half, on the left half of the lot is a one-story house constructed circa 1930 that contributes to the historic character of the historic neighborhood. The lot is zoned single-family, but the existing house is categorized as a duplex. Because the existing house is a duplex...
Oh, one second. I'm sorry. I noticed you're leaving. Do we all need to take, I hate to lose people. Do you want, do you guys, everybody else good?
We only have, what, three more?
Um, one, two, three, four.
I'm going.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Melissa, just to...
So, recap. 1212 McChesney is in Inglewood Place. It's a double, it's a 100-foot wide lot on a, on a street that has a lot of 50-foot wide lots. The house on the lot is historic, but the application is to construct a house next door to it. The lot is zoned single-family currently, but because it's categorized as an existing duplex, codes is determined that if the existing house is converted back to single-family, a second dwelling unit can be on the lot. So, the applicant is proposing to create a horizontal property regime, which is something they do, not with our department, but someplace else, also known as an HPR. So, they want to construct a second detached, single-family residence on the right half of the property. The HPR will allow the owner of the property to sell off the property separately from the existing house at 1212 McChesney. The Storing Zoning Commission does not have the authority to determine the number of units on the lot, and codes has determined that they can have a second dwelling unit on the lot. However, MHCC can determine the appropriateness of the height, scale, location, and form of the second dwelling unit. So, this application is for both an infill and an outbuilding. The infill and the outbuilding will be constructed on the one half of the lot, as you can see on the HPR. It will, in effect, be a side-by-side, unattached duplex, as it will be a second dwelling unit on the lot. MHCC does not typically allow for detached side-by-side duplexes, as they typically result in narrow houses that do not meet the historic context and do not meet the rhythm of spacing on the street. However, in this case, staff finds that the proposed detached second house on the lot does meet the historic contact and the rhythm of spacing. So, if you look here at this metro map, you can, the lot in question is highlighted in pink. You can see, even though these aren't super accurate, that the, that the house on the lot is shifted to the, I guess it would be the east side of the lot. And there are a lot of 55, or, I'm sorry, 50-foot wide lots on this block. So, kind of, in essence, by building a second unit adjacent to it, it is keeping the rhythm of spacing along the street. So, here is the site plan. The two houses on the lot will be separated by 8 feet. Staffs analyzed the distance between the houses on the street that are on 50-foot wide lots, and we found that they're between 8 and 19 feet apart on average, with the approximate average being about a distance of 15 feet. So, again, the applicant is proposing a distance of 8 feet, but we found that the average on the block is 15 feet. There are two crosses of the street that are approximately 8 feet apart, as is proposed for this site. The new infill is shifted close to the existing house in order to allow for a driveway on the right side of the property. Staff recommends that the infill be shifted a minimum of 2 feet to the right, so there's a total of 10 feet in between the houses, kind of bring it closer to that average of 15 feet. That will also allow for it being about 5 feet from the horizontal property regime line. So, even though it's not technically a property line, so it's not technically a setback, a 5-foot setback from the side is what is typically required in a neighborhood like this one. So, we thought that being 5 feet from the HPR line would be most appropriate. So, the proposed infill is a true one-story structure with a ridge height of 20 feet 6 inches. Staff finds that the height and scale meet the immediate context, where houses are largely one and 1/2 stories, with heights ranging from 15 to 25 feet. Here are the side elevations. Even though the house is deep, staff finds it to be appropriate because its overall height and width are modest in scale. Staff finds that the no materials, fenestration pattern, and roof form meet the design guidelines. Here is the one-story outbuilding. It will not contain a dwelling unit. The location, footprint, height, scale, setbacks, and no materials, and reform for the outbuilding do meet the design guidelines. So, in summary, staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. First, there be a minimum of 10 feet in between the infill and the existing house on the lot. Two, the finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of adjacent houses. And then, the other ones are standard conditions for approving windows and doors, a brick sample, the porch railing design, the roof shingle color and texture, and the location of the HVAC. So, with those conditions, staff finds that the project meets the design guidelines.
Okay. Any questions for Melissa?
Just come.
No, go ahead.
Oh, just a good comment to Melissa. Thank you for all that dissertation from pages seven to nine, because it gives us more, but this is an interesting case where it is really site-specific. So, again, another example of that.
Right. In many other places, we would not allow a side-by-side duplex.
Right.
But, here, we thought that was appropriate.
Yes, thank you.
Melissa, as a way, and the applicant can certainly speak to this, I don't know if the screen porch orientation, solar orientation to the house below, it seems that if the driveway were switched between the two, that you would get, you would get that spacing and maybe not have any planometrics that would, you know, as...
So, you kind of flipped the site plan?
The site plan would be just a building, not at all.
Yeah, I mean, staff would be supportive of that. I'm not sure if there's reasons why the applicant would not want to do that, but we would be supportive of it.
Van doesn't even play an architect. I just was curious if that would be, if that would go more towards solving the rhythm and spacing along the street, but I didn't know if that had been considered as...
Staff didn't really look at it. I mean, we would be supportive of it if the applicant was interested in doing that, or if the commission required that the applicant do that, so.
Okay. Thanks, Melissa. Would Van like to come back again?
Van would like to go home, like everybody.
Do it further right.
Van Pahn, 2929 Sidco Drive. I'm the architect for the project. Yeah, one more time. A couple of things. So, the, there is a dimension from the face of the house to the proposed HPR line, and it is 3 feet 11 inches. Per survey, the two houses would be 8 feet 8 inches apart, as drawn right now. The owner wanted not to have a driveway separating the property, so that it felt more like two properties adjoining one another. And the rhythm of the street is the driveway shift from side to side. Sometimes they're side-by-side, sometimes they're joined, sometimes they follow the same rhythm. This is not a wide driveway. It's 10 feet wide, as drawn. We're certainly open to moving it 1 foot 2 inches if we have to. We would certainly like to try and keep a green space between the property line and the edge of the driveway as well. To mirror the plan and move the driveway to the opposite side presents some interesting things, because this, as you can see from the contextual photograph of the existing house that is planned north on the screen right now, I don't know, so I guess it is to the east. It is to the east. The grade drops from east to west at a pretty good clip, and we chose to set the house where the driveway would be below the level of the windows, looking out onto the public spaces. You know, to at least a degree that if somebody's passing by or whatever, or the inevitable cars parked there, I know that's just not, that's frowned upon, but they're going to be parked there, and look down the street, that would give us a little bit of visual screen from inside the house. I don't, I have not had a chance to talk to the owners about, about mirroring the driveway, because that actually wasn't presented to us, other than move the house. So, I can't speak to them. I think that they would prefer not to do that, and even if that meant modifying the side porch to a certain degree and making it shallower to maintain the driveway width, which is minimal, they'd be open to that. If you have any more questions, staff's been very helpful on this, and I appreciate you.
All right. Any questions for Van? Okay. Thank you again. Open public hearing. Would anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing and closed public hearing. Discussion?
I'm going to go home.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Go home, Van. 719 Shelby Avenue.
Okay. Whoa. Whoa. I can. It'll be, it'll be boring for you guys, but sorry. We just lost our visuals. Okay, so, this application is for infill and edge field. We have a lot that's at the, at the corner of Shelby Avenue and 8th Street. It's empty except for an outbuilding at the rear of the lot. And just for a little background, that outbuilding currently has an apartment in it. However, the infill is for a duplex, which will be the two dwelling units permitted on the lot. So, the owner has recorded a restrictive covenant, saying no one will be living in the outbuilding. That may be torn down in the future, but that is not a part of this application. So, we're just considering the duplex. So, the proposed duplex is going to have a side gabled roof form with a large shed dormer on both the front and the rear elevations. Maybe we'll see it in a minute. It's going to read as a 1 and 1/2 story building. It's approximately 30 feet 11 inches tall, which is compatible with the historic context. Here we go. All right. Thank you, Melissa. That's it. Yep. So, we'll just sit back real quick. Here's our lot.
For the record, it's still not on our screen, but...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
It's behind you, if you want to turn around.
Our monitors, anyway.
Here's the outbuilding that no one will be living in. And here is our front elevation. Like I said, it's going to have this side gabled roof form. There's a large dormer in the front and the rear. It reads as 1 and 1/2 stories, 30 feet 11 inches tall, which we find compatible. The width is 35 feet at the front, expanding to 39. This is slightly wider than the historic context, but staff finds the minimal width increase to be appropriate in this location, because it is at a corner, and it's not going to be between two other smaller in width homes, and it is just a little bit wider. We do have, I find, the large front dormer is out of scale with the building when compared to historic examples. Staff would recommend that the front dormer be split into two smaller dormers, approximately 8 feet wide, which would match up with the width of those doors and side lights below. Here are your side elevations. You can see the lot slopes up towards the back. You can see the lot slopes up towards the back. Let's see. Oh. So the plans show a mix of five- and six-inch siding reveal. And this is something we've talked about a lot. Staff would just recommend that they use a five-inch reveal throughout. If they want to use some six-inch for detailing, we can approve that. And the applicant has agreed to that. Here's the rear elevation. You can see how the slope of the lot causes the rear elevation to be a lot lower than the front. We do have a couple of minor site issues. There are no walkways shown on the site plan leading from the porches to the main sidewalk. So staff would ask that the location and materials of those be approved prior to permitting. Also, that existing retaining wall, which we'll go back and look at, this wall here, if that needs to be rebuilt, the material and design should be approved by staff for that. Here you have a little context. The house at the top is right next door. The ones at the bottom are across the street. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the proposed infill with the following conditions. That front shed dormer be split into two eight-foot wide dormers. The finished floor height be consistent with finished floor heights of adjacent historic structures. Staff approve the final details, dimensions, and materials of the roofing color, concrete color, stone porch pier material, and porch railing material prior to purchase and installation. The siding reveal will be five inches. Any six-inch reveal accents shall be reviewed and approved by staff. Front walkways be added, and their location and materials be approved. If the retaining wall needs to be replaced, the design and materials should be approved by staff. And the HVAC shall be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint. Any questions?
Don't think so. Thanks, Jenny.
The applicant is here. I'm sure she wants to speak.
Hi, I'm Lynn Taylor. I should have packed a coat and a lunch with me. Or snack, rather. I did get the recommendations back till Thursday because of this huge list of houses, I guess. So I had revised the dormer and sent it on Friday. So I'd like to give these to you. The staff has had it since Friday.
It's new information, though. Do you want to accept it?
Well, why is it new information? I sent it Friday.
Because they.
Well, I know, I'm going to send it to them.
Their rules of order and procedures state that they don't accept new information. Because they haven't. We can't, because we didn't think it met the guidelines.
My client has to wait another month because the staff got me the recommendations late.
We go as fast as we can, but we didn't get them to you late. We got them to you when it was completed.
But I turned it back in the next day.
I'm not trying to argue with you. Their rules of order and procedure state that they won't accept new information. They have to go by what they've seen in advance and had some time to look at. If you want to make some changes that meet what staff feels will meet that requirement, we can do that. We didn't feel like that did.
Okay, wow. So the next time, I'd like my project to be a little higher on the list, because I got mine in early. Anyway, I separated the dormers. It's 12 feet now, not eight. I have a bedroom. I can't get into the room if I separate the roof totally. I can't have a door, a closet. I printed these out. They're 12 feet now. The dormer does look better. The roof is not split, because I can't get into the room again. This is a tight lot, a narrow house, a narrow each side. When do you send the stuff out to them? What date does that go to the commissioners?
Usually the Thursday or Friday prior to the meeting.
Is the main thing you've worked on, the dormer you've got?
The dormer is all I have an issue with. Because of the bedroom and egress windows, I can't put an egress window on the other side. I mean, it's very clear by this, just looking at it, it's different. And I don't think it's fair, again, that I'm being penalized, or my client's being penalized, because they didn't have time to look at my project and get it to you all in a timely manner. So I'm only talking about the dormer with 12 feet.
And there were some others before that verbally stated it. So even though, you know, just verbally stated. The fact that you're only talking one of the seven may be.
This is a simple one. This is not like the complicated ones you've had. And I'm going to go ahead and give it to you.
Give it to Rita.
That is up to the commission to decide.
I have it up to the commission, but I would like him to see that.
It is up to the commission to decide. You can't hand it out without the chair approving it.
Just give it to Robin first. She'll pass it around.
Do you want to vote on whether or not you want to accept new information?
Well, keep going, Lynn, and just keep going.
So just the dormer, because of the bedroom and the doors getting into the room and everything, I separated them out. Now the dormers have seven feet between them. And I actually pulled the dormer on the left sides and the right sides in another six inches. And the center of the wall that separates the dormers and the front wall is three feet back. So, and the only other issue I just want to talk about, or one other thing, I don't know. I'm assuming that in Edgefield, you all would have to even approve them removing the dirt. Is that true? Because I don't know. And this grade is very problematic on this house. So I would assume historically, they would have never removed the grade. They just built the house like they. On this particular street, on that side, the houses just step up all the way up the block. And I measured from, the grade now, if you shoot it over to the house to the left, is about 20 inches roughly above the finished floor of the other house. And I drew the, then I took that dimension and drew the house at three feet above that. So it is going to be taller than the house to the left, because every house starts to step up that block. Even the house across the street is higher, too. So, and I was told by another staff member that it does have to grad, it can gradually step up. So I wanted to be clear or understand that the finished floor didn't have to match the finished floor of the other house, because it's like down below the house. And then the stone, the wall, if we decide to take the dirt out, is that a possibility? And I don't know if we talked about that, Jennifer? Or Jenny, I'm sorry.
Either way. It's both my name. I feel like we did. Yeah, we emailed about that. You said you weren't planning to, but you may need to replace parts of the wall.
Yeah, okay. I think that's it.
So about the finished floor level, she'd asked that, just.
I'm going to refer that to Robin when she has a moment.
I'm not as familiar with the project as you are, and I'm not really sure what the question is. The commission looks at what's presented. So if you had.
If you want to or need to change the grade? That's something you could present?
It's the question about the floor level. I mean, that street does, and each house elevates up a little. So I mean, if it's, if there's enough, there's enough difference. I mean, it's quite, it's not steep. But each house sits just like upstairs. So I mean, if that, I think it was three feet above the other one. I mean, that, to me, seems reasonable, knowing the area.
So I would think then a consistent floor height would be between the one on one side and the one on the next side.
Well, there's the street. There's a street, and then the other house sits even further up, because there's a street between the two.
Correct.
I mean, this is a corner lot.
Right.
Okay. According to the site plan, there's eight feet of grade change across the site, which is significant. It sure is, yeah.
Which I don't think, I don't trust the grades. I'm going to have to survey or check it again, because I'm a little concerned. It doesn't, it looks flat almost when you're out there, but the grade says no, so.
Walk that street.
I did. I went out there, and it's, grade can be very deceiving. A lot can look flat and not be flat.
Well, and there's a grade this way, and then there's a grade up this way somewhat, both sides.
You know, actually, yeah, if you look at it with the retaining, I think they may have leveled, to your point, they may have leveled the lot. And he's interpolating what he finds over at the sidewalk and then over the house next door, and is kind of connecting dots between when, in fact, the contour lines may just go right around the retaining wall, I guess. And that's.
And everybody's so busy these days, there's a lot of mistakes happening.
Sure, okay.
All right, thanks, Lynn. Open public hearing. Anyone like to speak regarding this project? Seeing the unclosed public hearing discussion? It seems like the applicant is willing to work on the first one. You know, just maybe his condition, just to go back to staff to work with on there, which he's apparently always kind of worked through and see if that would be, you know, approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval based on staff recommendations with the qualification that item one regarding the shed dormer be split into two eight-foot wide dormers. The staff have discretion to modify that condition.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Could we get some direction on that?
Sure. What my interpretation of this was, was that having this one structure that's a duplex with a single dormer across the front didn't match the rhythm or spacing or what was typical of that particular house type in this particular area. And I agree completely with that finding. Whether that perfect number is eight feet or whether it's something more or less than that, you know, I would trust the staff to make that judgment and either stick with the eight feet or look at a different number if they feel that's appropriate.
In this particular case, I don't, I think the, what was submitted that you haven't seen is not something we feel we could approve. Maybe something you feel you can approve. I'm a little bit concerned about providing good direction to the applicant.
Mr. Chair, would it make sense for us to consider new information, given that this is a single condition and where the staff's looking for some guidance from us? It could hold up the applicant, I think.
We might have to.
All other things being equal, given that we're all trying to move along here. Nevertheless, I don't want us to go against, not allow it for other applicants.
That's the thing. I hate to, we always don't allow it. I was hoping we could just get a, you know, work through, since we're still just on this one.
I don't know the specifics, factual information, but given that the applicant had attempted to turn it around and that there might be a condition here that is not present with other applicants providing us new information, could that be considered?
Well, I'll leave it to you guys. I will say this, though. They all said, talked about Thursday, so that would, you know. But how does the other commissioners feel about it? We can say it's a special circumstance due to the, and we only talk about one condition that we're going to review? Everybody, just you guys?
I would do it on, not necessarily just be in one condition, but that the number of cases and the turnaround, the turn time on the applications, you know, the staff worked as fast as they could. But given that there was a, it wasn't as if the applicant submitted it the day before, and then now they're coming to us with this brand-new information that there, this wouldn't open the door to others to just willingly show up with new information. Would be.
Kind of what we have.
Clarification that I would offer.
I'd still say, too, that we were, it's one condition that we would be talking about. Because if we get into several, then we really are opening ourselves up to something that we have had a longstanding.
Agreed. The staff has asked for some further clarification to help them in working with the applicant. And I think our ability to give that here would not delay it. Yet another 30 days will put the staff and the applicant in a situation that's untenable or they couldn't figure out.
So.
This is how I heard it. I heard that this was approved, because I heard Lynn already say she's already ready to go with this eight-foot wide dormer.
I don't think so. She has a different one. And I think Robin said that the new is what is not.
And that's why Commissioner Searle was saying eight-foot and/or adjustment. Okay.
And then they need more information than just that. So I guess to give them more information, we maybe would have to. But you've made the motion.
Well, I would just be scared of it broaching into territory of the staff making the decision when that's up to the commission, is my thought on that. We're putting it onto the staff, back onto the staff, when it's, they make the recommendation, and then we are supposed to decide. That's my qualm with that situation.
Yes, and Robin.
Your qualm with not allowing new information?
With continuing with the motion.
Okay, I got you.
Mr. Chairman, might we table the motion for some further discussion?
Yeah, I was just about to ask him if he would.
Further move that we allow the applicant to present additional drawings to clarify the situation.
So table the motion. Okay, table the motion. All right. Okay, Lynn, you've already given it to Robin?
Yes. Did you want to vote on that?
Oh, no, we'll pass. Yeah, we'll look at the new information.
I'm voting on taking the new.
Oh, making a motion?
I've made a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, opposed, okay.
Thank you.
Lynn, why don't you present just the dormer thing to us so we can make sure we're.
Yes, the dormers now are split like seven feet. Thank you, because I didn't make myself a copy. And the dormer is 12-foot wide. I did move it in six more inches from the left. And so now it's true two feet on each side as far as the left and right side of the entire house. And I'm trying to center the windows above the door. I stepped the wall back on the dormer three feet from the main wall below on the first floor. It's because of a bedroom up there and getting closets, egress windows, doors to open up into that. The roof will step back in the middle of the dormers. It is, the dormer has dropped down quite a bit from the ridge. And that's why I did all that. Actually, I think it looks better, but that's just my opinion. Oh, I do have a copy.
It's a shed then that comes down, and then it's one roof with two.
Yes. And I need that middle wall to be able to walk into the room, because the main roof is going down so quick that it chops off the door head. Otherwise, I could have just separated them completely, which I have done in the past. We're just, this house is just very narrow. The owner is just getting barely what they want. So if I separate the roofs and take one up to 412, they may hit the ridge. But it's going to create a water issue with the roof for future roofing leaks. I mean, that's another reason. I hate to design houses with future roof problems, but you know, that's something for you to consider, I guess.
I'm not, maybe you weigh in, too, Ben. I don't know if we would have the single roof. Because that's the only thing I would have about the, I don't know. Anybody's discussion thoughts about that? So just bear with us as we kind of review this a little bit.
So Ms. Taylor, it looks like, from the drawing, it looks like, oh, sorry.
I got it. I did thought I didn't have it, but I do have it.
Looks like from the second floor plan, I don't see the wall moved back. Did you just handle that with a dimension and not with three drawing? Looks to me like you're really, that front wall, the dormer is very close to the front wall of the...
See the, on the second floor, you see the three-foot dimension on the second floor plan there in the center.
Okay.
That's where I set it back. And if you look on the left side elevation, there's a big arrow that's pointing to the setbacks and overhangs.
Cyril, was your, your question was about the separation of the dormers if you're facing the front, one from the other, or was it from the front wall, the, the front wall of the ground floor to the wall of the dormer? Something I'm struggling with is, you know, which is the better option? I'm, I'm wondering if there are historic, I feel like in my mind there's historic homes that have, I don't want to create a situation that looks more awkward than a full front-facing dormer that kind of covers what a house to duplex to. It's not a form that you would normally see, but if the door were in the center and there were two bays on either side of it, would the form of that just not look like, give you pause to like, wait, what is that? And that we're trying to make two separate things out of something that might look more appropriate if it were, even though it's a duplex, if it were consistent all the way, all the way across.
Like either separated or either or, is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm wondering that aloud, because I think this as a nod to separate the dormers entirely doesn't quite, doesn't quite get there. I think it looks, perhaps might look more odd in practice than, it's maybe a noble goal for us to try to do this, but once, once it's constructed in the third dimension, it is less good than it would have been otherwise, you know? I don't know what the answer to that is, but I'm perplexed by the question as well. Well, I, I, it could be that I'm drawing a distinction or I'm remembering a house that might have a, you know, wide front appearance, a single-family home that has a wide dormer on it. That dormer might not be flush with the front wall, which in this case, in this design to fit the two duplexes in the narrow, as Lynn has described it, you know, that's out flush with the front part of the house. It's not, it's not sort of setback, and so it would appear in a form more dominant than, than if it were able to be setback further, if you're following that at all. And then by setback, I mean setback from the street, from the front setback of the dormer above. And I think that goes in a completely different direction that doesn't help us.
I mean, I could take the 12 to 11 and still have a bedroom, and I could go back three foot four, push it back if that would make people feel better about the size of it.
Robin, what, is there a precedent for, I haven't encountered it, of not technically having a staff recommendation for what we're now endeavoring because of the new information? You know what I'm saying? So like, we don't have the staff recommendation for this new information that we are looking at. What is the precedent for that? Either way, you know, either, if we, if we still agree, you know, with staff or if we say, yeah, okay, either way.
Yeah, I think, I think the reason I voted to look at the new information is that if we were going to make a motion and give staff some direction and sort of what we're thinking, but we're not designers either. So that, that's sort of why I think we, that's why I voted to see the new plan, to give them direction, if that's the direction that we choose to go.
The slippery slope, but yeah.
But again, if we're just giving staff direction, then they're still making the decision. You know what I mean? For, for new information, which I'm kind of uncomfortable with putting that on them because it's a commission decision, and yes, I understand it could mean 30 more days, but, you know, I don't, I don't know the scheduling, I don't know anything, but you know, we, the agenda's posted on the Thursday before, you know, and that's when we get our information. So any information is moot, unfortunately. So I just, that's, that's just how it works and, you know, that's unfortunate, but I'm just uncomfortable just making general suggestions to staff like, oh, you know, it has to be eight feet or it's not eight feet, yet when they're the ones that have been delving into this project, you know, with the applicant, and then it's a commission decision and it just, it's my opinion.
Yeah, that's, that's why we don't do it. That's why we don't do it. But Ben did start it, actually, you have to wrap it up, Ben. No, I'm just joking.
I just, I mean, I just feel like we're all kind of struggling with it and so it's, but because, you know, I'm not a designer, you know, so it's just looking at it just fresh today with this new information, even though, you know, staff had very specific requirements for the first time around, Ben's sketching something, you know, so if the conversation could have just gone, or could still go differently, but just as of now, I feel like we're all just kind of struggling with this.
Yeah, this is why we typically don't. But we'll have to go somewhere with this.
Sometimes we can approve something conditionally based on new information being brought back to us. Is that a possibility of us approving, basically approving all but one and then having that condition revisited and brought back to us?
Sure, you could do that.
Say that.
Well, approving the application conditionally based on, I mean, accepting all the other conditions and saying that, that we're asking them to resubmit just the, and addressing the condition number one to be resubmitted to us, reviewed and resubmitted to us. Does that give you something to, I mean, does that help?
It does, it just does.
Does that help the process move forward?
It doesn't matter to us. I don't know if it helps the applicant because I guess she can't really get started on construction because things could change.
It has to come back.
But I don't know, let her answer that.
Does that help at all? Say that again, because I can't finish drawings unless I know what size the dormers are, but what was it you said that? I mean, I have to, I get staff approval before I go.
I'm just trying to get something moving forward, and if that doesn't help, then that conditional approval doesn't help.
Well, I mean, I can work with staff unless they just want a next-door dormer, I mean...
But what they're saying is they want it submitted back to us.
Oh.
So.
I don't think that...
I mean, I don't think we want to put the burden on them.
Right, well, and I know.
Because we're not able to give them, we're not designers, and we're not able to give them enough direction that they're comfortable.
But it's not fair to my client. They have had Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday to look at it.
I understand, Lynn, but the staff, I mean, we've had, I mean, they're understaffed number, and they have to review all these things.
I agree.
But Monday, Tuesday, I'm sorry.
They do the best they can.
Yeah, exactly. And Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday is a moot point because the agenda is posted last Thursday.
I sent it on Friday. They didn't get it to me. The problem is, they got it to me late. That's the problem. I understand they have a bunch of houses. I understand they have a lot of work. They're understaffed, all of it. I mean, yeah, I wouldn't want anybody's job because they got it rough. I just, when I get, tell my client this, he's going to be really pissed, and I would be too.
He can be mad about it.
And I have to write, I wait another month. No, he's going to be mad at the staff because they didn't look at it Friday when I sent her, and I don't have exact times.
We did look at it. In this particular case, we did have an opportunity to look at it, but we didn't feel that it met the requirements. So that's why if your decision is for them to work with staff, we need more direction. We didn't think this did. So we would have just been going back and saying, it doesn't meet it, and we'd be back in the same place. We've met all of our internal deadlines, and we have reviewed it.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm just not sure we can, we're going to get there, as I'm afraid, Lynn, unless there's a red thing, something.
They're just writing notes. I'm trying to understand what it was we were trying to decide between. I requested the additional information be seen so that I could understand what it was we're looking for, because here the, this front-facing, this front dormer is flush with the front wall of the house, and then the porches stick out from that. And Lynn's, you know, done a material change there to sort of break that, break that up. If not, they're not maybe exactly flush, but they're really close to it in terms of the original.
The bottom wall is, the second-floor dormer wall on the middle sets back three feet.
In the, in the new information, I'm, I'm talking about the old information and what we're distinguishing between in these two, in these two options. And so that, I was having, I just wanted to make sure in the third dimension that I wasn't seeing, seeing things that either weren't there or imagining things that were there. And so that's what all the fever sketching was, was about. And so I think that's what the, you know, that's kind of what the decision is, is if you split those two pieces and they're not viewed as completely independent of each other, that, you know, those in, in, they're right out in front, and then the porch sort of comes off and separates that, that form as a sort of a two-story, two-story element out, out in front of it. And if you provide the little nook or recess, you're still only three feet back and those, those things, the roof's discontinuous, and it, it's a nod towards certainly separating these things out and providing not a full unbroken dormer across. So that was, it seemed that those were the, those were the two choices and...
Breaking it up.
That's, that's why, and in, in the effort to provide some additional guidance, that's what we've been asked by the staff to do. You can circle that around and make sure the applicant sees that so that, you know, I don't want to put things on, on paper that aren't, aren't actual or at least a reasonable representation of what's, what's being requested of us to provide some guidance on. That is, I mean, that's, tries to approximate what, what we've been asked with the new information to, to look at. And I was in my mind clarifying where that front wall is and what, you know, is, is there an appropriate separation to try to achieve what? That's what was originally submitted.
Sorry.
Or, I guess. Pass, yeah, pass that to the applicant just to make sure we're, or circle that around. I can take it over here.
What is this showing me?
That was what the new information, there's two pages there, two little sketches. It sort of shows the roof.
Oh, yes, yes, that's it, yeah, sorry.
What is it?
What did you draw?
Yes, sorry. I was looking at it.
Well, that, I was, I was trying to figure out what's the difference where, you know, the original submission and the new information.
It's hard to tell in these two drawings.
Yeah, I was, there's the shingle representation of the second floor and the shingles on the roof, you know, I just want to make sure it was, knew what I was looking at.
As you, Ben, I would say either we say it's got to be that one option where it's all out potentially, or it's what staff recommended, two separate dormers. I will say probably, I would lean probably to two separate dormers, but, but that's, but I am hoping to...
Yeah, that middle ground is what, what I was hesitant to say, you know, yeah, I've seen that before, I know what that's, I know what result we're going to get. That's the only reason for circulating.
So then I guess really, so the staff's recommendation was eight-foot dormers, these, the new information dormers are 12. That's just the thing, you know, so what does that look like?
That's true, yeah.
You know, with the massing and why, you know, they originally recommended eight-foot, which, you know, according to the applicant, kind of makes some of the stuff unworkable so that, I guess, we're just kind of back to that.
Yeah.
At some point.
We are.
We have a tableled motion, I think.
Well, but the problem with this motion, it required more information from staff, and that's what...
I mean, procedurally, we've got to do something with the motion from the table.
We have to do something regardless. So I, but I, I guess we need to kind of at least kind of talk through wrapping this up that I'm, I guess, I'm feeling like, you know, staff recommendation is probably the best way to looking at it, just because we're not figuring it out and we're not giving them any more information to go with it.
So to hand's point, then I think it's probably appropriate for me to withdraw the motion that's now tabled.
Yeah.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so motion has been withdrawn. I guess that's good. We don't have to vote on that. Is there any? Based on where we didn't get? Sorry, Lynn, but we're just not...
I had hoped that, that the additional information would give us an easy solution that would allow us to go ahead and move this forward. I don't think we're there, and so, so I would go back and, and move on 719 Shelby Avenue that we accept staff recommendations.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, how about that? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, motion carries. 1707 Blair Boulevard.
Okay, 1707 Blair is a two-and-a-half-story house constructed circa 1915. It contributes to the historic character of the Belmont Hillsborough Conservation Overlay. If this looks familiar, it's because the commission disapproved an application for an addition in rear structure on the site in April of 2017. The applicant has returned with a revised design for an addition and an outbuilding. The site is zoned RM20, so based on the zoning and the size of the lot, up to five dwelling units are allowed under the code. So again, MHDC cannot determine the number of units. We are just looking at whether or not what's proposed for the site is appropriate in height and scale, materials, all those things. So the media context is primarily houses with single-family forms. The top photo is a large four-square to the right of 1707 Blair. The middle picture shows a house to the left of the site. It's about one and a half stories and is zoned R8. And the bottom photo shows a multifamily development at the corner of Belmont and Blair. MHDC approved this development in 2015. It was an SP zoning. Across the street are primarily houses with single-family forms, although there is one multi-unit structure. Based on the fact that the majority of the lots in the media vicinity are similar in size with this, with this house and similar, with similar forms and zoning, any approval for this property will likely set a precedent for the other properties zoned RM20 on this block. So the application is to construct an addition to the historic house with a midway parking pad and to construct a detached building at the rear. The historic house in addition will have four dwelling units in it, and the rear structure will have one dwelling unit in it. Note that there's over 36 feet in between the back of the house and the outbuilding, which staff does find to be appropriate. So for the most part, the work being done to the front facade is restorative in nature and meets the design guidelines. On the front facade, there are two current entrances, and they will both remain. Currently, the primary front porch and the secondary side entrance on the left side of the front facade are separate and not connected. The applicant is proposing to connect the front porch and secondary stoop with a platform. Staff finds this to not be appropriate because historically, the front porch and side stoop were not connected, as the left side stoop is, is a later addition. In addition, the separateness of the side stoop ensures that it reads as a secondary entrance as it would have been historically. The historic house was constructed as a single-family house, and even though it's useful change, which I think currently was constructed as a single-family, currently there are several dwelling units in there, not sure how many, but it is currently divided up into apartments. But, but even though it's not going to be used as a single-family house going forward, the house should continue to read as a single-family. the house should continue to read as a single-family form. Keeping the two entrances separate is key to the original design intent of the house. The proposed addition will be no taller than historic house, which is appropriate. The, the addition connects to the historic house with a flat-roofed dormer. It connects about six inches below the ridge and will be inset two feet from the sidewalls. The dormer will extend over the entire back of the existing house and will provide access to a rooftop deck on top of the rear addition. Staff finds that the flat, flat roof form of the dormer accentuates the height of this part of the addition. Typically, rear dormers have slopes to them, even if it is a slight shed roof, a slight shed slope. The 36 feet, six inch wide by 27 foot deep dormer will appear more like a rooftop addition than a rear dormer. Staff recommends that the dormer have a minimum slope of 312. Staff is also concerned because of the low proposed ceiling height that once construction begins, it will be requested to either raise the existing ridge or raise the height of the dormer addition. Neither of these would be appropriate. The rear addition portion of the addition will be two stories with a flat roof, so kind of the back portion of it, once you're beyond the footprint of the existing house, will be a flat roof. Although the design guidelines state that for additions, roof form should be a minimum of 612, staff finds that in this instance, the flat roof form is appropriate primarily because this is a very tall, two-and-a-half story house and the addition, the kind of the top of the addition almost lines up with the parapet, or not the parapet, the, the eve line of the, of the house. So staff found that in this instance, a flat roof form behind a house with this type of reform and this size is appropriate in that location. But before we move on though, I'm sorry, so, okay, the top of the addition's parapet will be two feet taller than historic house's eve, so therefore thought that it is appropriate. There'll also be a three-foot, six-inch tall railing, which kind of lines up on the outer, I guess, parapet wall of, of the addition. Because of its visibility, staff is recommending that the railing be set back from the sidewalls by two feet on both sides, just to kind of again decrease the visibility of that railing. Here's the rear of the addition. The entrances to the residential units on the upper levels will be via a stairwell at the rear. The stairwell is not enclosed, but is contained within a partially enclosed stair tower. Staff finds that the open, open-air stairwell to be appropriate because you're not going to see it from the street. It's going to be pretty much entirely invisible. So here are the elevations for the rear structure. Because a lot is zoned RM20, this is not bound by the restrictions of the DADU ordinance. It's just an additional, we're just considering an outbuilding with a dwelling unit in it and parking spaces in it. So we're just making sure that it's subordinate to the historic house and appropriate for the site. It has a footprint of 1,211 square feet and this is about half a footprint of the historic house, so staff finds it to be appropriate. The rear structure will contain parking on the ground floor facing the rear alley. It has a semi-enclosed stairwell facing the back of the house of the addition, so it's kind of the semi-enclosed stairwells facing the street. And the design guidelines do state that outbuildings should have stairways that are enclosed, so it specifically says in the design guidelines that stairwells for outbuildings should be enclosed. And for that reason, staff is recommending that the stairway be fully enclosed. So the rear structure will have a maximum height of 29 feet from grade. Because a lot slopes up, it's only approximately 25, six inches tall at the rear. And you can see even though the lot slopes up, the new outbuilding is still lower in height than the historic structure, which staff finds to be appropriate. So in conclusion, staff is requesting mending approval of this project with the conditions that the dormer have a minimum of 312 slope to it, the railing of the addition step in two feet on each side, the port, the front porch and front stoop on the left side of the front facade remain unconnected, and then all of the standard material, standard conditions about staff approving the windows and doors, brick sample, balcony material design, the exterior stair material, the HVAC location. And then finally, we are asking that the exterior stairs on the outbuilding be fully enclosed in order to meet the design guidelines. So the applicant, I think is still here? Yes, he's still here.
Okay. Any questions for?
Unless you have questions for me first.
Okay. The applicant, come forward and state your name and address.
My name is Martin Wick. I am at 912 Bailey Street and I'm the architect for this project. As Melissa said, we presented this back in April and it was considerably bigger than what we're showing now. We've reduced the scope a good amount and worked a lot with staff to get the scale down to the right size and we very much appreciate the recommendation for approval. We agree with the condition for the railing and the separating the front porches. We, we're fine with that. We're gonna go ahead and do that. But I did want to discuss a little bit the condition about the exterior stair on the rear building and then the dormer having a roof slope of 312. As far as the exterior stair being enclosed on the rear building, this is an RM20 lot and as such, it's, it's designed for multi-unit developments and there are guidelines that, that govern a multi-unit development in our, in the historic guidelines. Specifically, they, they state that for multi-unit developments, interior dwellings should be subordinate to those that front the street. Subordinate generally means the width and height of the buildings are less than the primary buildings that face the street, which we've, we've worked to make sure that that's the case here. But we've been going back and forth with staff a little bit and would like to discuss maybe a little bit with you whether this rear building is, should be considered an outbuilding as it would on a single-family lot, or if it's its own interior dwelling unit, in which case some of the guidelines for outbuildings and DADUs may, may not apply to it. It also, it's a little odd to us that this exterior stair guideline is the only one being applied as far as outbuilding guidelines go in this case. And so we just wanted to talk about that a little bit and see if we could get a little more clarification on what, what this building really is defined as. For the 312 slope on the dormer, it doesn't state anywhere in the guidelines that it needs to have a specific slope. The rear dormer guidelines simply say that they should be, the rear dormer should be inset from the sidewalls of the building by a minimum of two feet and the top of the rear dormer may attach just below the ridge of the main roof or lower. We're six inches below the ridge and actually two foot, six inches from the exterior walls of the original house. And then there's actually a three-foot overhang on the main portion of that roof there as well that will additionally conceal this dormer that we're putting on the back. Staff has also mentioned that this could be considered an addition because of its, because of the size, but addition roof guidelines also state that the height of an addition's roof and eaves must be equal, or must be less than or equal to the existing structure and that visually evident roof slopes should match the roof slopes of the existing structure and roof plan should sit in accordingly. But it does specifically mention visually evident roof slopes, which is not the case here with a flat roof. Besides that, we also went through the last six months and the commission has improved, approved at least 11 different projects with dormers and additions that had lower slopes than 312. And I have the list here, but it's getting late, so I don't think I should go through the whole thing. And in looking back at this year's approved projects, we found a lot of projects that had potentially lower slopes than 312, but were not even labeled on the submission. And at no point in those recommendations did we see anything that mentioned the roof slope. We had a dormer very similar to this design on the previous submission and there was no comment about it at that point either, which is why we started with this in the first place when we came back. The attic space is very low on this house. It's just above seven feet, so to get a bedroom up there, that's sort of the required height. I know staff mentioned that they're worried that if, if the structure gets too deep, it might push the, or someone might come back and ask for additional height, but you know, that's, that's on us to make sure that we pick the right structure and make sure that we don't do that because, you know, it's part of designing it. We know the guidelines. We know we need to stable that height and we will do everything we can to make sure that happens. You know, we're just asking for a seven-foot ceiling up there and that's about the only way that we can get it. I want to thank you for your time. I know it's getting late, but we appreciate your consideration for the project. If you have any questions for me, I am happy to answer them at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Maybe just stay close by though, just as you're the last applicant. Don't go all the way back to the bat. I don't, open public hearing, seeing unclosed public hearing. Discussion.
Okay, well, I'll ask it on mic because I just asked Ben. I just asked about what, which specific area they were mentioning, the 312 slope for the dormer request. And, I mean, staff wants to point it out. I think Ben kind of showed me, but just for everybody.
Did you see it unless, I love it's appearing on your screen. It's like there.
So it would be a rear-facing gable or would it 312 from the ridge backwards?
Three, like a 312 shed is what we were thinking, so.
So it's opposite one. Would we yield a space?
Unusable?
Essentially, yes. That's.
That's what we're talking about.
Right.
Full disclosure, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, okay. And maybe Melissa, just since it's been a little bit, the whole closing in the stair, do you mind just, just for all of us, maybe, because those, those are the two things.
Sure, yeah, so on the stair, I'll point out which, where it is. The arrow appears? Oh, there it is. Oops. Well, maybe I shouldn't. So it's, it's there. So the design guidelines for outbuildings, and we did look at this as an outbuilding, but not necessarily as a DADU, because it's not a DADU, does specifically state that stairwell should be, there shouldn't be external stairs, that stairways should be fully enclosed. So applying that guideline here.
Pretty clear.
I also, well, I, before I reread the staff recommendations, I actually thought it was odd, when she said that that was recommendation, I kind of personally kind of thought it was odd because there is an external stair in the main building. I know it's in the back and so what, is this one on the side? Is that, is, will it be visible and just?
It is, it does face the street. I'm not sure if it'll be visible. It's, whereas the one on the back of the addition is, is not visible. And also, I mean, it's not unusual for us to approve exterior stairs on rear additions because a lot of times there's a second-story deck with stairs down, so that actually is something that has not been problematic in the past. It's just that the outbuilding design guidelines say that they should be enclosed.
I guess this, this one's an interesting situation because for the RM20 and, you know, that's not our purview, but the fact that it's, I mean, it is an outbuilding, but kind of not an out, but, you know, it's not, it's not an outbuilding in the traditional sense that we always view outbuildings, so I guess that is the interesting thing about that.
One way to look at the stair or enclosure, it was, I think it was appropriate, appropriately described as semi-enclosed and the intent, following the written guideline, semi-enclosed is not completely enclosed, so it wouldn't necessarily be compliant in that regard. But I feel like outbuildings on a project that's not atypical like this, it's more typical, you can't really semi-enclose a, you know, that, that outside access to get to the area above the garage. Perhaps it was written around that specifically and we're maybe splitting some hairs on this project. I think a reasonable question. I don't, I don't have a definitive answer for it one way or the other.
Is there, what do we feel about the, the 312? Is there any? Because it would make it not usable for what is decided, I mean, what they've designed it for. Any thoughts from this side?
I mean, if it goes how it is shown in the drawings, I mean, I don't, you know, it just won't be, it's not they want it to go like that. I mean, it's still subordinate, I think, from the frontal view of the house, you still can't see it. It's behind, you know, it's not, we're not raising the ridge rays. But, and it kind of, I mean, I think it differentiates it personally from the house and then the other structures in the back, the addition are flat roofs.
As it is, as it's.
As it is designed. And so I kind of, if that one's the 312 and then you get, then you get to the flat, it's kind of like, well then where does that roof end? Like if you're standing on the back little patio, you're just like looking at the top of the roof. I mean, not that that, you know, not that I'm saying you should get everything you want, but I don't, the fact that you can't see it and it's still subordinate in my mind to the front of the house is, I don't really have a problem with it. And I kind of like even the side view of it, the, the house is transitional to the new structures that are flat. And then the outbuilding is also a flat roof. So it's kind of like historic home, still subordinate, but, you know, new, new, new.
Good.
My opinion.
I guess for me, I do feel like the, just following the, just following the train that I thought that Melissa described, that definitely I feel like the closing in the stair. And I, I could, at first I was thinking about the pitch, but I, I think the way you described it's a good way to think about it. It still kind of fits back into that subservient, but I'm curious if anybody else has any other thoughts about that.
A 3 and, I'm not doing this math right. A 3 and 12 pitch would yield zero added.
Space is 24 feet wide and you'd slope down six feet?
Essentially, yeah. It would, we, we would get almost nothing to use up there because of how low, because it is only a, it's a two-and-a-half story house.
And just. I mean, I understand that, I just think.
There's actually technically two bedrooms up in that attic, existing attic space right now, which, or, and a bathroom, which are sort of illegally used space.
I should have you up at the mic. I'm sorry, please.
Melissa mentioned there's a lot of apartments. There's six apartments in the existing house right now and they've, they've divided it up in a pretty ridiculous way, but there are two bedrooms and a bathroom in that single existing attic space and by codes at this point, you couldn't call any of them usable spaces. So we're trying to create some usable space in sort of the least invasive way that we can, by containing it behind that, that massive roof that's already on there.
Okay. And Melissa, it was just staff's that it was not being, at this height, it was just not subservient enough?
Right. I think we kind of felt that the, you know, the rooftop, not having any roof slope and them being as wide and as deep as it is, just kind of accentuated the, made it look kind of like, almost like a rooftop addition versus a traditional shed dormer that you'd have off the back of a house.
And I'll add to that too, that it, that it's on that half-story. It's a two-and-a-half story building. So you've done a lot of rear dormers, but they've been on one-story, one-and-a-half-story, two-story buildings. So we were concerned about all that massing up high where it probably could be seen fairly well. And this street, I think Melissa had said too, there, most of the homes on this street are zoned in the same way and they have a similar form. And so whatever you approve here is going to happen on every single one of those homes, most likely.
I will say one of the biggest differences for this house is the, the rear portion of what's being shown as the existing house is, in addition to that existing house, I'm not exactly sure how old it is. It looks very similar, but it's, you know, a little two-story portion there and it kind of offers us that pedestal to put the, the dormer on top of. Obviously, not every house will have the same situation, so though it is setting some precedence, these, these houses have kind of been added on to a lot on the back in various strange ways and so each house will, will have to approach what they do behind them differently for each case.
Yeah, I mean, yes, totally understand that, Melissa and Robin. And I mean frankly, I, no offense to the applicant, but I could not care less if you can use that floor or not, but, you know, that's, that's not my purview. But if you don't have, you know, so if, we may, I'm just trying to look ahead, if we make them have the pitch, it's unusable, so they're not even gonna do it or, I don't know, maybe they'll just come up with a new plan, but otherwise, if, then in my opinion, the addition looks odd sitting above, you know, so I mean, and not to get into that, but they'll just have to, you know, re, if, if we, if we agree with that, then we'll probably end up getting a new plan because they're not gonna put the pitch. because they're not going to put the pitch in. I mean, it does unusable, that's pointless. So just, just food for thought, I don't know.
Could you go back to the front elevation? Yeah.
And this is a very, this is a very active area, and, you know, we're going to have to remember what we do, because it'll, like, Robin was reminding us, it does come back to us, because these are our homes that people are heading on to a lot, this area. Well, for that reason, I will say that I support staff recommendation on 1707, 1707 Layer Boulevard.
Okay, we have a motion second, any more discussion? All in favor?
No.
All opposed? One opposed, one opposition, okay. All right, motion carries. 2313, no, we just, yeah, 2313 Volks Lane.
Okay, last one, the applicant is not here, they've agreed to the conditions, I think we can be quick. So this application is for infill in Waverly Belmont. The site is part of a triangular-shaped lot on the corner of Ninth Avenue South and Volks Lane. The parcel itself sits within the district, but the infill will face on the Volks, which is out of the district, but the back faces on the Ninth, which is in the district. You approved the design for the house on the left in December, and now we're looking at the house on the right. So here's the lot, there we are at the corner, and the bottom right, where that van is, is where this house is going, and the one on the right is the one that's currently under So the proposed infill is one-and-a-half stories tall, 27 feet high, staff finds this to be appropriate. The width is where it's interesting. The width is approximately 52 feet wide with a depth of 28 feet, and again, I don't know, there is a sidewall, I don't know why that's not showing the elevation, but I promise it's there. The majority of historic homes are significantly narrower in width, typically between 30 and 40 feet wide, however, because of the site restrictions, it's impossible to extend the depth any more than that 28 feet. So given that, we feel the narrow depth is going to help mitigate the increased width. The resulting footprint is 1,456 square feet. Staff finds that, given the unique site, the frontage on Volks and the narrow depth, the increased width is appropriate in this specific instance. Again, we're missing walls. This is the rear, and due to the unique site, we feel that the rear elevation needs to be scrutinized more than normal, since it's highly visible along Ninth. Our one comment on this is those windows in the dormer are extremely small, we would recommend that the windows be enlarged to fill the front face of that dormer. The applicant has agreed to that condition. Here are the side elevations, you can see the side gable clipped roof with both front and rear dormers, the roof form is appropriate for the context. And here for context, you can see the rendering of the previously approved building in the proposed, and then the street view along Volks where they are starting construction. On the one you already approved, this one will be just past it on the right. So in conclusion, we recommend approval with the following conditions: the rear dormer's front face be primarily windows, the finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor height of the adjacent historic houses, staff approve the final details, dimensions, and materials of the windows, doors, porch railing, and the color of both the stucco and the brick prior to purchase and installation, and HVAC should be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint. Any questions?
Any question for Jenny?
Is the, when I saw this, I guess I thought, I've never seen kind of like a shape like this before, I'll say, kind of like, remind me of Hansel and Gretel or something, not that's good or bad, but, but I really was kind of like, huh, until the, I mean, the only thing that brings me to it is that one inspiration photo that you showed on Eastland Avenue, that's the exact same form, so that's, otherwise I would think that's interesting, I mean, I still think it's interesting, but that's really the only thing that, I guess, brings me to being, you know, kind of okay with it, is the fact that it does exist somewhere else, but I just, I thought it was an interest, we've never, I've never seen.
It's uncommon.
It's uncommon, we'll say that.
But we were, we felt that it was appropriate.
All right. Appropriate to the styling and consistency of the neighborhood, or, when you say that, can you elaborate?
I'll jump in if you don't mind.
I'm not saying it's a negative, okay? It's just different.
No, I think this is worth discussing for a second. It is an example that isn't in this district, and so I was hesitant to even show something in another district, because that's not what you do, you don't go into other areas and pick out their context, you look at the immediate context. But in this case, the house faces a street where everything on the other side of the street and continuing down on that same side of the street, it's not in the overlay, because of the weird configuration, and it's on the edge. So knowing that it is a historic form, and it's not dramatically different, it's still a one-and-a-half side-gabled house, we thought it would be appropriate in this particular situation, in this particular location.
The old Vienna general shell brick is, you want to see an actual sample of that, or is it in keeping with bricks that aren't really red, and that's appropriate to the district? Don't know yet?
Don't know yet.
Okay. There's a graphic representation of that, and then some turn balusters that are, look really nice, and really expensive, on the materials, the materials submission page, just curious, we're, I guess we're not, those need to be seen in person before they're approved at the staff level, would be a note? Okay, good.
All right, thanks, Jenny. Seeing no one in the public, not an open public hearing, we have a motion?
I move for approval of 2313 with staff recommendations.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor?
All.
All opposed? Motion carries. We wanted to talk about training, we had a little training today, so, and sometimes our best intentions just come back and get us, is why we, about trying to, yeah, trying to look at information after the fact, and we've had three different cases that started doing information after the fact, but that was just a good example of, well, we try not to do it, but we tried to do it to help, and it's been a long meeting, but just in the future, we understand why we don't do it, but that was.
I think in the long run it will.
In the long run, it will? Okay, no, it will help, you're right, it will. So Robin, do you have any more official training you want to go over real quick?
I'll just email you.
Okay, okay, all right.
We can, we can say that dormers are an issue. They always have been.
Okay, anything else?
Always have been.
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn? So moved.
Yes.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.